How are you?
I'm doing very well. I'm only gonna think of all walks you there.
I don't know how you do it.
So we'll get a chance at... We have like a five minute conversation.
Not a lot of people do this. It's starting to get us...
You don't even like normally that would be something I would say. And I don't think it would be...
It is no... It's starting to create...
Yeah.
Just twice.
Good, how are you?
Hey baby, how are you? When are you guys having your mom's birthday?
Thanks, sir.
Good to see you.
Oh, yes, yes.
Things that happen.
Everybody's very kind about nothing like to put me in a lot of these tracks.
Andrew, thank you so much for inviting me.
Actually, are you on my...
So Tay, Tay's got her own course. So for Tay, she started in the lab role and started logging the hours by flight.
I watched the show all night.
Level.
And I remember like my first one I wrote.
People look this and they never move.
What do you think about this?
The clock is right, alright. Pursuant to section eighty-four fourteen eleven of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty, at six thirty P M. In the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four fourteen twelve of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. Please join us with the Benson J R T C as they present the colors.
Colors, essence, gent. Right shoulder, arms. Forward, arms. Colors, hope. House. The colors. Freezing, arms.
Please join me in a question.
The Constitution is the flag of the United States of America. And since we are a republic of the British States, one nation, I would like to admit this all for the liberty to the justice of our all.
Order, arms. About, face. Forward, arms.
Thank you, everyone. May be seated. Vice President Dr. Holman will lead us in the O P S vision admission statement.
First, our vision. Every student, every day, prepare for success. And our mission. Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipe.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Nine, present.
Thank you. Moving on to school spotlight with Jeremy Maskel.
Well, good evening, Board President Snow, Vice President Dr. Holman, members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Logan. We are very happy to introduce Burke Aviation as our O P S proud spotlight this evening. One of the rigorous and engaging programs available to our students throughout the district. This year, members have enjoyed a trip to visit a major airline with support of a strong partner, and they are also tackling a hands-on project that is pretty remarkable, and they'll talk about more in a moment. Burke Principal Gay Lanin planned to be here this evening, but a last-minute need prevented her from joining. So I'm very happy to introduce curriculum specialist Andrew Brooks and the rest of the Burke Aviation Group. Please come up.
Come on up, guys. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, guys. Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. We are so proud of the things that our Burke Air and Space Academy have been able to accomplish over the past eleven... Since two thousand and eleven, so eight years that we've been a part of what we've got going on here. I think there was supposed to be a PowerPoint here available? Is this correct, Jeremy? And while we're working on that, I wanted to just tell you a little bit about what we consider one of Omaha Public Schools and Burke High School's best-kept secrets. A lot of people don't understand that at Burke High School, we are actually training kids to fly planes, build planes, and fly drones. To have a career in those fields. Over the next twenty years, Boeing estimates that we're going to need five hundred thousand pilots here in the United States. Here in Omaha alone, that need is felt across the board. Jetlink's Aviation, Duncan Aviation, Epley Airfield, Southwest, United, American Airlines are all scrambling for pilots right now. And they are opening up pathways for our kids that are incredibly easy. So our mission, which isn't up there, but our mission is that we want to supply our students with real-world experiences. When I hear that our district's mission is being career and life-ready, that is what we do. We give students the opportunity to practice in the high school level in aviation and then proceed through an incredibly established pathway into a career. So we've got three pathways at Burke Air and Space. The first one is a drone pathway where we have students that are actually certified to fly drones. The second pathway is one of maintenance and mechanics where students are actually working on right now building our own plane, which is called an R V twelve build. They're about ninety percent of the way done. And then we have what we call our private pilot pathway, which I'm going to ask my certified flight instructor to speak about. And all of this is only possible because of our community partners. We have incredible businesses here in Omaha that are just dying to have our kids be a part of what they're doing. Duncan Aviation, and especially our new partner Jetlink's Aviation, has really stepped up and they've given these kids incredible opportunities. Jetlink's just flew our entire powered flight class down to Dallas, and we got to join them where we went to the Southwest Training Facility. We are the only school they have ever flown to go down there to go see their facility. And that's only because of the opportunities that our business partners have made for us. So I'll turn it over to Pat. He's going to tell you a little bit about our private pilot's license.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Ryan. I'm a certified flight instructor. I've been at Burke High School since two thousand and two. Like Andrew said, two thousand and eleven's when we first started the program. U N O came... We, the Board, gave us a mission back then of, I believe, Mrs. Cracky, you were there. All the career academies were coming into various buildings. They went to Burke and said, "What can we do?" And I said, "Well..." They said, "Well, you got a planetary, maybe aeronautics in space." So they threw it in our lap and he said, "Well..." They came to me because I knew I flew and they said, "Well, how do we do this?" And I said, "We get together with U N O." And when we went to them and approached it, they could not get with us fast enough. And it has just exploded. And it's to watch these kids. Obviously, students have opportunities that in their minds may have never been able to come up to them. They're now doing amazing things. We have kids going to the airlines with jobs right now. They're conditional employment. What we have provided with our students, giving them, showing them a career field that they didn't, they may not have ever imagined that they could do. Something say, "You could do this." Andrew had mentioned we were at Southwest. And Southwest, the, some of the air crew I got to visit with, they were training. And they said, "What are you guys about?" And I told them who we were and what we were about. And they were just like, "Oh, my gosh, this is amazing." And to make connections with the students and see the students going, "You could be here. This is real. This is going to happen." To have a kid be able to solo, to be able to fly an airplane. The Swanson boys, Tyler and Scott, just took their check rides on Saturday. So to see that, that's where the rubber meets the road and it's amazing. And it just really reaffirms the teaching portion of it, where we go, you know, this is why we teach, is this. These kids, what we offer them is when they are going to the airlines and being a real experience, they're getting conditional employment their second year at the university. So when they go to U N O and they enter after completing our program, they'll go to U N O and actually start their second year. So October of their first real semester on campus, they're going to be approached by airlines to get conditional employment. And it's in their, go home to mom and dad and say, "I have a job. And I'll be living in your basement for about a year until I go off to training," and training is real. And they're going to be doing it. We have a simulator at Burke that is, I can actually take these kids in, sign them off, and they can actually fly. With real hours that go on their logbook. I had the opportunity taking Dr. Logan. She came out and test fluid, crashed it, but... But if, you know, if Dr. Logan can do it, anybody can do it. It was a real pleasure to have her come in. And it was great because she can take that to this board and say, "This is what's real. This is what I saw. These are what these kids are doing." And so you see the, when these kids are out doing amazing things, it's, you can say, point and say, "This is O P S. This is what we do." But, yeah. Any, do you guys have any questions on that?
We're going to turn it over to our students now. So we'll have them each introduce themselves to you a little bit and tell you a little bit about their role in the program and what some of their experiences are. So Tay, you want to go first?
I'm Tayana Kellogg, and I started the program when I was a sophomore. I took aeronautics and now I'm in powerflight. This program, I like about it that we can do the role and we actually get the credit for the classes. And what they teach us is amazing because no other school has this opportunity. And I've been through all the classes that I have to take. So when I do go to college, I will be in my second year. And that's amazing opportunity that a lot of students that do not get. So that's why I like this program and I can be a pilot, and that's what I want to do.
Good evening. My name is Scott and I'm a senior here at Burke's Air and Space Academy. I started my freshman year and I had no idea I liked airplanes. I was actually going to the medical field, I thought about. But then I took rocketry with Ms. Vaughn, the best teacher I ever had in my life. And I was like, "Okay, I have to stay here." So I took the four years of courses and she had mentioned in her freshman year, she's like, "Oh, yeah, there's going to be some point in your career where you'll be able to go up with a pilot and they'll be able to, you'll be able to take the controls for a few minutes." I didn't realize in four years I would actually have soloed and officially, Friday, I'll have my license. I would have never expected that one to happen. So, and then because of this, the progression, I went there. Mr. Ryan, Mr. Brooks got me internship with Jetlink's Aviation, where currently I'm doing flight following and learning about the aircraft. So just the other day, I was flight following for Luke Combs' aircraft. So that was quite impressive. And then, so let my brother talk more about the mechanical side because we do that one too.
I'm Tyler. I'm his twin brother. Yes. We, I started at the Air and Space Academy my freshman year as well. I've taken all the courses and all of them for dual enrollment as well, so college credit. We finished up Mr. Ryan's powered flight class at semester. And then just Saturday, I got my private pilot license. And then, so next year, I'll be going to U N O for their Aviation Institute. I'll enroll in instrument training and then hopefully... I've also taken a whole bunch of A P classes. So hopefully, I'll be able to graduate in only three years. And we should mention flying, but we're also part of a group called Aviation Nation, which was, Burke helped us out in finding this program. It's at the Millard Airport. And every Tuesday, Thursday, we've met up and it's been about three years now. We're building an R V twelve aircraft, which is made by Vans. It's a kit plane. And we're hoping we'll fly it to Oshkosh this summer if it's completed in time.
So perhaps our board members might have some questions for you guys here.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Can we give them all a round of applause again for their amazing accomplishments already? I'm curious to find out, did you go to Burke for this program? Or were you just walked into a room and someone told you about?
No, I didn't go for the program. I didn't even know about the program. And Ms. Vaughn, a very well-liked teacher of mine, she... You too, Mr. Ryan.
Somebody's got to be the hammer.
She told me about the program when I was in aeronautics and telling me like how they were going to have aviation program. And I was like, "Hmm, fine." So she got me into it and now I love it. So that's how I got to know about it.
I was also like Tay. I did not go to Burke for aviation. I went here because it was my home school. But when we were enrolling in classes our eighth grade year, I didn't really know what to take. And I always liked airplanes. So I, "I'll take this class." And then I ended up following it. And then now this is going to be the career I want.
Awesome.
I'm in a similar path to that one. I didn't know there was a program until walking in freshman year.
Well, thank you so much. I'm going to open up for colleagues if you guys, anybody. Ms. Snipe.
First of all, I want to say to Mr. Brooks and Mr. Ryan, just thank you for your out-of-the-box thinking. I am just so impressed by this. I'm going to be smiling like a Cheshire cat all night. I'm curious, one, to hear more about your experience at the Southwest facility. And then I only heard about one and plans going to U N O. I'm wondering where the other two are planning on going to school at as well.
Well, I'm planning to go to U N O too. I just didn't say it.
What about Southwest, Tay? Tell them about Southwest.
Oh, that was amazing. So we got flown down to Texas and we went to the Southwest headquarters. And basically, we toured and they told us about all the different type of jobs that they have and opportunities that we can have, actually, if we wanted to fly for Southwest. And they just told us all about it and we, they flew us down and came back and time for lunch.
I'll be attending U N O too. It's the cheapest option and they accept a restricted A T P there. So, which basically, in layman's terms, means that instead of going to the airlines at fifteen hundred hours, U N O is such a good program, they allow it at a thousand hours. So we can get to the airlines that much faster going through U N O. So as far as U N O, the thing that really, or not U N O, excuse me, the Southwest trip that really spoke to me was it was all cool and dandy. And they mentioned that ninety percent of their Southwest jobs are not pilots. Like, well, that was pretty impressive. But the thing that was so cool is we saw their flight simulators. There's sixteen of them in this large room, like, oh, yeah, each one's about fifteen million dollars. They showed us the interior and it looked identical to the Southwest, Boeing seven thirty-seven who walked in or flew in on. So I was quite impressed. I'm like, "Wow, I can't believe that we're here and we could potentially fly for them in the future."
One of the neat things that I've seen, I used to fly in the military and I see friends of mine now who are with, flying for United, Southwest, and all the big, major airlines. They know about us. They say, you know, the room on the streets, "What's this school or, you know, this train that got in Omaha for kids?" And I said, "With your public school?" And they said, "Well, yeah, that's the program I'm affiliated with." And tell us more about this. So the word is out there. Southwest is one that's really reached out to us right now. United knows about us. American knows about us. They want, they want to reach out and be with, you know, we want to, "I want to come talk to your kids. I want to do this stuff." And I would love to have you. Let me see, you know, give me your card. Let's start networking to have these experiences for the kids. Say, you know, and the great thing about it is when we were at Southwest, the recruiters came out. The people that are actually go out to the different places in the military and the other, other flying facilities, that talk to their pilots, they're talking to our kids. And they're real with them. Tay, the gentleman you were talking to, he's like... Tay, the gentleman you, you were talking to, he's like, "Young, you know, young lady, you need to come, here's my card, you need to, we need to keep this dialogue going." And, you know, if Tay decides to do that, or any of the kids, to have this dialogue with recruiters, this is real, this is going to happen, and this is what you want, and it's not something that's on a piece of paper. And when you talk to parents about it, and what their young people are doing, they don't believe it. "Oh, that's not happening." No, it is happening, and it's gonna happen in a year, so. But it was, just to watch, their faces were the best, so.
Thank you. Dr. Holman.
Hi, thank you all so much for coming tonight, this is fantastic. I have a question about your, how many students are enrolled in the program at Burke?
I'll handle this one. So, currently in the Burke Air and Space Academy, we have 112 students that are actually enrolled in the academy. Total, 283 students are actually taking courses that are involved, and it's some as electives. One of the things that we really pride ourselves on is, and especially because we're here in Omaha Public Schools, is the ability to create an incredibly diverse environment. The aviation world right now is very white and very male, and it is part of our mission to begin to change that, and the aviation businesses here in Omaha are also helping us with that. So, we have, right, right now, we're sitting at 17% of our aviators are female, and we're about 20% minority, so we're really looking at trying to help those students develop those pathways, and see themselves in those pilot seats, fly in those drones, and building those planes, and, and just trying to really diversify the industry.
Fantastic. So, then, how, outside of like Mrs. Vaughn?
Yeah, she's good civil air patrol, for sure.
How else do you recruit students to the program?
So, the vast majority of the recruiting we do is through what we do with, through Omaha Public Schools, recruiting in the middle schools, trying to get the word out to the middle schools, as we do through all of our career tech ed programs. And then, when it comes down to it, the word is just starting to spread. As it turns out, when you stand in front of middle schoolers with a drone on your table, they kind of flock to come see what's going on, and they're really, really excited about it. And when we, we begin to outline for the parents what the possibilities are for their kids, they're just blown away by the opportunities that they can get. Within five years after college, they can be making almost six figures, flying a plane, and really just designing their own schedules, it's really just incredible. So, it's an easy sell, it really is, but we were really successful at this last open house, last year's open house, we had about 283 families, this year we had over 1,000.
Wow.
And our air and space wing was absolutely packed the entire time, you couldn't even move in there, because we've got so much interest right now in the world of aviation.
That's incredible, thank you so much for sharing and being here.
Mrs. Cassidy, Ms. Cassidy.
So, you mentioned middle school. Well, first of all, again, thank you all for being here, this is incredible. I think that hearing about this type of program is, really, for me, it just brings it all home. This is, I mean, this program is what sets our district apart, this is one of many programs, but this is very astonishing. You mentioned middle schools and going in and recruiting. I'm interested, are there like prerequisites that you are looking for, are there certain guidelines that middle school students would need to be doing classes that they need? What type of prerequisites, I guess, to actually go into the program?
It's a very easy question to answer, and the answer is no, there are no prerequisites. Part of what we believe high school is about is not just building the career option, but giving students the opportunity to explore, and see if it's something they like to do. So, we try and recruit students from everywhere to come and say, "Give this a shot, see if it's something you're interested in, and if it's not, all the better, find that, find that out in high school, and not when you're paying for college at that point in time." So, we've got a lot of students that come through the program and decide to do something different, but with the middle schoolers, it's really just an interest in aviation, try something new. A lot of kids just say, "Wait a minute, I can actually fly a plane in high school?" And yes, you 100% can, if you come in, and students just give it a shot.
Is there a maximum number that you can take in your enrollment?
Depends how many FTE I'm allowed to get into the program, is really what it comes down to.
Don't look at me, so, Dr. Logan.
If you wanna ask, if you wanna ask me, absolutely not, bring them, we will take them all. We want, we wanna give this opportunity to as many students as possible. I don't know about you guys, but nothing like this existed when I was in high school. And coming from as a social studies educator, I walked into this, and all of a sudden I said, "What are we doing at Burke?" And when I began to understand the reality of what was there for these kids, like Mr. Ryan was saying, it's, it's just, it's mind-boggling. My current plan is to send my own son right now to Burke to go through the Air and Space Academy. He got to do one of the, what we call the discovery flights, where they take you up, and literally the pilot just gives the controls to an 11-year-old kid. It's scary, but it's fun. It is, it is, it is incredi, it is absolutely fascinating, and the pilot's out there, and he's got control of it, and my son came down and was like, "I wanna be a pilot." And this is an 11-year-old kid, this is the kind of experiences that these kids can get, and it's just absolutely fantastic, absolutely fantastic.
Okay, one last thing. So, you three obviously are remarkable, keep up the great work, but I really hope that you go back and tell Ms. Vaughn to her face how much you appreciate her, because teachers don't hear it enough. So, go back and tell Ms. Vaughn.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
I just wanted to be brief and just say congratulations on getting your license, and it's really, it's really good to hear that you guys are already thinking about college, and you have your plan already laid out, so congratulations on that, and also congratulations on doing the dual enrollment and taking advantage of that, that's something that not enough of our students really get into.
Thank you. Mrs. Krackey.
First of all, I had the tour with you at school, and if you weren't an enthusiastic person to tell you all about Burke, he is the one to contact. And he was kind of a fall guy, someone else was going to come along, but I was so glad it was him, because he did a great job. And if you haven't been out to the schools as they have been redone, I mean, it looks really good out there, it really does. And the enthusiasm that you have for the program and how it has grown, can you tell me how it incrementally has been from the first year, how, how did that build up to this point?
Well, what happened was, we started off with one class, we started off with private pilot ground school, and we did that, and we got really good at it. And then, eventually what happened as, I started teaching at the university part-time, and doing, as an adjunct, and so I got to know the faculty, and I said, "This is, hey guys, this is," and I tell, I told, I went to the director, and I said, "Dr. Terry, this is, this is where we are, this is where we wanna be. What would it take to have all four of your required classes in the, in the institute be available at Burke? I'll, I'll teach them, I'm already doing it somewhat now, and Mrs. Vaughn, Leanne Vaughn, she'll, she'll take two, and I'll take two, and we can do their entire first year here." And so, when they come to you in their first technical year on campus, they're coming in with, as a sophomore, with the idea that, that with the potential of, like, these two kids, these two young men having their private pilot's license, and they're already a step ahead. And he sat and thought about it for a minute, he said, "Done, do it, what do you need from us?" And that was so fantastic, with, with OPS, with UNO, what do you need, what do you need? It's like I told Mr. Brooks, "I need you to say yes a lot." That's my curriculum specialist. But we, we just kinda grew, as we started with one, then we went to two, and then also we went to four, and the labs that we were available to, to provide for the students for the flight side, it's just, they're getting more and more opportunities for college credit.
And I have one more question about, does it qualify as an AP class? What kind of credit is it?
It's three hour, it's three hours of dual enrollment, so it's not an AP class, but it is, the curriculum is set by UNO, the syllabus, everything has to match exactly what a student on campus will be doing. We have everything they have as far as simulators and facilities, so it goes across as a dual enrollment, but is taught with the rigor of the, the college level. It has to for UNO to bless it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scotty.
Well, I'm so excited you're here, I feel like I could've used you a few months ago. So, in my work life, I've dealt with the issue surrounding pilot shortage, and I'm fairly certain they might be making more than that in less than five years. So, my question, and so I wanna give a shout out to Jetlink's, great job for hosting you all to Southwest. I had a relative who recently, in the last couple months, flew in those simulators and shared with me what an incredible experience that was, so I'm so excited for all of you to have been able to go down there. Is Jetlink's, or any of the other private jet services, looking at hiring some of you for, as co-pilots, and providing training so that you can get those hours that you need? Because I think that's the critical thing, you've gotta have those hours and that training, specific to the type jet you're flying, or the type of plane you're flying, is also extremely expensive, as I'm very well aware of.
Yes, how, the, the pathways that you, are pretty, pretty generic as far crossboard, as far as Jetlink's or Envoy or any of the commuters, how it works is when the students graduate from UNO, they'll have a private, a private instrument commercial multi-engine ticket, they'll have all the requirements to go to the airlines, the only thing they'll lack is the hours. So, they're gonna graduate from UNO anywhere from, right around 250 hours of total time. The airlines will take them at 9:50, so they have to, typically, they could, they can fly mapping with Sandhills Aviation, they can, they can flight instruct, most of them flight instruct, so that's why I made the comment, you're gonna live in your base, parent's basement for a year, because you're gonna be flight instructing. At 9:50, they're already on their way, they're, they're all set, but they'll stay here in the Omaha area and, and flight instruct, and that's how they'll build their time, and also network, which is...
That's great. Well, I will tell you to be an encouragement to all of you, I have had a 20-year-old co-pilot on a private jet who is here in the Omaha area, and it seemed really young to me, I said, "Whoa, how, how old is he, and he's getting on a plane worth millions of dollars?" And they said, "He knows what he's doing, right?" And so, I see all of you having that opportunity, and that's what gets me really excited, because there's a huge shortage right now in Omaha, and in the, really in the whole nation, and we see that coming as pilots start to retire, so, good luck, I'm super excited for you all.
And if I could, I just wanted to piggyback on that, because there's, what Mr. Ryan was talking about were the pathways, and this may be the most impressive option here, and I'll go very, very quickly, but the airlines have developed pathways where the students right now interview once ever, and once they're in the pathway, they progress from a starter pilot all the way up to a first officer, is this right? And it just continually progresses year after year after year, moving them through the program. So, for a student, all they have to do is be able to get in, and the airlines take care of the rest. And it's just, building those pathways is so easy now, and it's really, really fantastic for our students.
Well, thank you all so much. Dr. Logan.
I just wanna, first of all, first of all, thank your amazing instructor, and Mrs. Vaughn, and I'm gonna beat you, because I'm gonna tweet about her as soon as I get home, and tell her how much you appreciate her work. But I wanted to thank you all, especially for the flyover that you did when I onboarded. It was a really special, I still, I know, I still have the video, and when I sent it to my family to say, "Hey, I got a flyover," and I think they were expecting F-15s, and I said, "No, they're not gonna quite be," but it was very, very cool, so I wanted to thank you so much for that.
We had Burke students onboard those airplanes.
Yes, I know you did, so I really appreciated, it was really a special night for me, and everyone knows it's my neighborhood school, so always just very, very proud, so thank you.
Thank you so much, we would love to give you all a small token of our appreciation. I know it doesn't compare to the actual pilots that you'll become in those wings that you'll get, but you really do make us proud, and, and it's always amazing to see our students excel, and we already know what careers you're gonna be doing before you even graduate. So, everybody, please give them another round of applause. We'd love to shake your hand, if you can sit over there, we'd love to shake your hand and congratulate you, and we can take a photo right here in the middle.
Good job. And I also like the tour you gave, you were special.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys. Thank you. And this is Tay's office, everybody. This is the people that really do this.
Yay! The AP lady wants a picture.
I assume I'll be in the back. Flying B.
You have to be in your cheerleading windows, just get it right up.
Okay, everybody look this way. One, two, three. You'll take one more. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to board and superintendent communications, I just wanna give a shout out to the back, former board president, Lacy America's in the house, Gabe Lacy America, OPS board member. Moving on to board and superintendent communications, Dr. Logan.
Thank you. Good evening, presidents, and all members of the board, those here in attendance this evening. Last week, I had the pleasure of stepping into a classroom at Liberty Elementary School, the classroom of Mrs. Luisa Paloma-Hare and her merry band of kindergarteners. It was during phonics time, and students were practicing their sounds. Now, you may know that that's a dual-language school, so it's a really extra special opportunity for me. Now, it may seem ordinary, but to watch these five-year-olds figure out words all by themselves in English and in Spanish, through their knowledge of phonemes was marvelous. First, they now, you know, "Jab" is not necessarily a word you want them to play out, because it's jab, "Jab." But sounding it out was terrific, and then to hear them do "Jota Ave, Ah Be" was also really, really cool. As a Spanish speaker, it was really fun, and because Spanish is a phonemic language that is easy to unlock, it was really kind of cool, sounding out was terrific, and to watch them unlock the keys to reading. Thank you to Mrs. Colmine, Mrs. Dobson, and their team for the leadership of a 15-to-20-minute required structured phonics time in all K-3 classrooms that began this school year. It is making a big difference, not just at Liberty, but I hear from teachers and principals who share with me how much it was needed, and children are benefiting, benefiting from it and becoming better readers because of it. So, I promised them that I would speak to them, speak about it today when I saw them last week. Last week, as well, on the anniversary of my selection to be the superintendent of the Omaha Public Schools, I did one of my favorite activities that I got to do while I was a principal, lunch duty at Fullerton Elementary School. Kids tell you the funniest things, like where they are going to a sleepover, and last week they told me their favorite team for the Super Bowl. Thanks to Mr. Buckholz and his team, it's a team effort from the nutrition services staff to the building engineer to ensure it's a pleasant, relaxing time for our young people. This past Saturday, the 100 Black Men of Omaha hosted the annual African-American History Challenge at North High. I'd like to thank Ms. Fulmore, who stood in for me as a representative for the Omaha Public Schools. The competition takes place annually and is celebrated throughout the month of February. Schools from, students from each of our seven high schools and from eight of our middle schools competed for $5,000 in cash prizes. The students spent months studying national and local Omaha African-American history facts to prepare for a Family Feud-style competition to showcase their knowledge. I believe the winners were in a middle school category, beverage middle school, they win, things like, they win every year, they, they, they crush everybody every year, it seems like, and then Northwest, again, our friends at Northwest, Go Huskies, winning, I know we have at least one alum up here that's very proud, so, very great job to them, always really, super, super proud of our young people, and learning about the history of, not necessarily their own history, but the history of their neighbors. We also, early childhood programs, sign up February 3rd to March 26th, reminding parents that we are currently taking applications for our early childhood program. We offer a wide range of early childhood programs if you have a child who will be three or four years old, or before July 31st. Kindergarten sign up as well, for our parents who have a child or children who will enter kindergarten this upcoming fall, please visit OPS.org to learn more about how to get registered during kindergarten roundup. The detailed calendar and additional information is posted on our website under announcements. As a reminder, students who turn five years old, or before July 31st, can enter kindergarten in the fall. Additional information is also available for our early childhood office. Kudos and general congratulations to Brian Hyes, Olivia Rickley, for being selected as the Runza Student of the Week, for her, still haven't had a Runza, for her strong work in academics and her leadership in the classroom. I will tell you, I have had the frings, though, they are really delicious. Alasia Douglas of Omaha Northwest Magnet High School for breaking the Class A single-game scoring record by scoring 51 points. That's amazing, on January 16th, Douglas is now tied as the sixth all-time career scorer in state girls' basketball, and I do believe I read on social media that she surpassed the 1,000-point mark last week. And to Omaha Northwest for being awarded the Social Justice School of the Year by the City of Omaha. Speaking of the City of Omaha, three days... roundup. The detailed calendar and additional information is posted on our website under announcements. As a reminder, students who turn five years old or before July 31 can enter kindergarten in the fall. Additional information is also available for our early childhood office. Kudos and general congratulations to Brian Hyes, Olivia Rickley for being selected as the Runza Student of the Week for her, still haven't had a Runza, for her strong work in academics and her leadership in the classroom. I will tell you, I have had the frings, though. They are really delicious. Alasia Douglas of Omaha Northwest Magnet High School for breaking the Class A single-game scoring record by scoring 51 points. That's amazing. On January 16, Douglas is now tied as the sixth all-time career scorer in state girls' basketball. And I do believe I read on social media that she surpassed the 1,000-point mark last week. And to Omaha Northwest for being awarded the Social Justice School of the Year by the City of Omaha. Speaking of the City of Omaha, three days, no, yeah, last Friday, I met with Sage Care. Sage is a National Merit finalist. He's at Omaha North Magnet School. And he came to meet with me, sent me an email because he wanted a letter of support for something that he's working on. He works on the mayor has a youth advisory council. And they are working on a campaign to change some of the, some restrictions around vaping and the purchase of products to support that. And I was really super, first of all, it's awesome when kids, students reach out to me to advocate for things that they really believe in or things that are affecting them in their lives. And I had a great opportunity with him. And so I'll be passing that information and letter of support onto the board. And last, I want to thank the Central Eagles Nest who invited me to the next game. I told them I will not be wearing a toga, but I will come and enjoy the game with them. So thank you for that. And as those conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Snow. First of all, Dr. Logan, you've been here a year. I think we need to get you a Runza. I think I might have to, I think I'm just going to have to buy you a Runza. I remember last year when you said you hadn't had a Runza yet. So, okay, I just wanted to talk a little bit this evening. I left some paperwork on all of my colleagues' tables here this evening for the upcoming event that our Omaha Public Schools Foundation is a part of. It is called, and I don't want to mess up our name here, it is the 2020 Vin Nebraska. Vin Nebraska has chosen Omaha Public Schools once again to be the partner for this wonderful fundraising event. And this raises a lot of money that all goes towards our programs in different ways that our Omaha Public Schools Foundation supports our students. So the event is going to be on March 27 and 28. Friday evening is a, let's see, Friday evening is at Happy Hollow Country Club. It is a seven-course gourmet dinner. And then Saturday is the grand auction and wine tasting. So more information is on the website at Omaha Public Schools Foundation. But if any one of my board member colleagues has any ideas for sponsors or donations, the board has wanted me to kind of reach out to all of you for some ideas. So see me after the meeting if you have some different ideas and want to help there. And of course, the public can purchase tickets. You can come to the wine tasting. You can do just the Friday night event, or you can do both. So more information, check out the website. And it's going to be a great event. Again, all proceeds go to our students.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Any other comments from the board? All righty. Well, moving on to public comment. We have three speakers. The board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know and one may be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you please not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide that to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each board member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. Mr. Ray, wave your hand. There you go. So everybody knows, Mr. Ray. I always read it, but not everybody knows. It is 7:11. First speaker is Emily Holtzclaw. Welcome.
Thank you. So Emily E-M-I-L-Y-H-O-L-T-Z-C-L-A-W, 5005 Chicago Street. So I want to thank the board and Dr. Logan for this opportunity to speak. I'm the parent of three OPS children and would like to address three items on the topic of reading instruction. In speaking with OPS staff on this topics, I think that we generally agree on many points. And however, from a public perspective, the items I describe below appear to be lacking. I respectfully am trying to resolve the disconnect. So for K-5 English Language Arts Curriculum Evaluation, my request to the board and superintendent is this. Prior to voting to approve the purchase of a multimillion-dollar curriculum that'll be used in OPS for at least five years, the board asked the K-5 ELA Curriculum Selection Committee to provide, at least to the board, but ideally to the public, the summary data from the selection rubric used and a list of who completed the rubric. I ask that the board review this information to see if it clearly and quantitatively demonstrates the recommended curriculum's content, scope, and sequence for phonemic awareness and phonics skills, and the supporting materials are based on the science of reading and therefore will be likely to be effective in the classroom. This should include a descriptive, description of the data to be collected to determine if the phonemic awareness and phonics subset skills are at mastery level for all children. Secondly, there is a need for phonemic awareness skill mastery. As a whole, the strategic plan on the agenda for approval includes support services using reading recovery for lower-performing schools and struggling readers. I applaud these efforts to seeking change from the way things have been done in the past, looking forward, not back. However, I want the board to understand that based on the information available to the public, using reading recovery alone will not result in a material change from the endeavor for struggling readers because one of the key building blocks of reading instruction is still missing from that program, phonemic awareness skill mastery. So the Children's Literacy Initiative report for OPS recommends that the Reading Recovery Program be employed. It basically includes more intensive applications of balanced literacy approaches, the same ones used in the past, which have resulted in the unacceptably low reading scores that we all agree need improvement. So looking forward, we all want this to succeed, all these efforts to succeed, but they may not until the mastery of phonemic awareness skills is included. So I ask that the OPS provide information showing how reading recovery program or other planned intervention efforts include methods to specifically remediate phonemic awareness skill deficiencies and the metrics to document the success. And lastly, regarding the science of reading training for early literacy teachers, I provided you a copy of an email I sent to my board representative a week or so ago related to the findings of a national survey of teaching colleges. And they graded how well undergraduate early literacy teacher prep programs train their college students on the science of reading. Several Nebraska colleges and universities did not score well and have not for years. And this is a crucial professional development gap that does need to be filled. So looking forward and not backward, I ask how OPS plans to fill this gap. States that have gained the most in reading proficiency in recent years are those that have publicly abandoned balanced literacy methods and are employing the science of reading into their instruction for teacher training. The result is that teachers can better understand what an effective reading curriculum includes and why it works because they understand the overarching concepts of phonological awareness. And then, more specifically, the function of phonemic awareness and phonics skills. So looking to the future, according to the National Assessment of Educational Progress, students in Nebraska have not made reading proficiency progress in 17 years using balanced literacy. So looking forward, we need to do something different and use the science of reading as the guide. We need to use what is known to integrate a key building block of reading, phonemic awareness skills to mastery into the core curriculum for all K-3 students, as well into the intervention for strugglers. So I look forward to learning more about OPS's plans in this regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Portia Howard.
Good evening. Good evening. Hello. My name is Portia Howard, P-O-R-S-C-H-A, Howard, H-O-W-A-R-D. This is my first time here and I'm kind of nervous of being up here. But my daughter really pushed me to come up here. And just a little bit real quick about myself is I wasn't born and raised out here. I'm from Southern California. The military brought me out here. And as a veteran, I got out with injuries. And this area served me very well as a veteran. So we made this our home. Being here, my daughter, she is now in the eighth grade. And she is enjoying school and she'll be going to Burke. So being here and hearing what they offer today was really exciting to hear that. So I guess we made the right choice. But I just have a concern today, something that I'm not bragging about. And it's happened a couple of times the last few years of some assignments. So this is on curriculum. And I just want to read what one of her assignments were and explain to you what my daughter went through after doing this assignment or not doing this assignment. So it's called, Pretend That You Are Waller. Make a Wanted Poster for Knight John the Escaped Slave. Include a price for his return and if you want him back alive or not. Include a written description of what he looked like, including any special physical characteristics. Include a short description of his character, his personality, and any special qualities he possessed. Your poster should be colorful and detailed. It should include illustrations of Knight John's face at least, and make sure it's poster size. My daughter came home and she was really upset because she doesn't like to miss any assignments. And she made up in her mind before she even talked to me about it that she wasn't going to do this assignment. But however, she had to sit in a class amongst other students who were making these posters of a wanted slave. As you guys can see, I'm African-American and I'm really proud of it. And she's proud of it. And that's a dark part of our American history. And she felt very low. And she didn't want to go back to school. She was embarrassed because everybody else was participating in it. And it hit her a different way. And then today, she comes home and says, Mom, you'll never believe what happened. I said, what happened? What happened? And she goes, my teacher bought a whole bunch of cotton to school today and asked us to clean the cotton so that we know how it felt to be a slave. And as a parent who chose this place to live and to raise her child, I'm starting to have some concerns about the curriculum and what's allowed. I know that you guys trust your teachers, but I'm starting to lose a little bit of faith in it. And I don't know who picks it or who chooses the curriculum. But I think we really need to make sure that we have a diverse group of people viewing what our children will be taught and how it might affect each race. And so I'm bringing that concern today. I really would like to get some feedback from it. I don't want to mention names here like you guys requested or my daughter's name. But I am a concerned parent who really wants to make a change. And my daughter really pushed for me to come here because I wouldn't have came here. And I want her to be an advocate for herself. And I had to go pick her up from practice here in a little bit. But I want to be able to tell her that I did come up here and I did voice her concerns and my concerns as a parent. So if you guys could help me out and guide me to where I need to be and what I need to do to help change this curriculum so that we don't scar or we don't re-traumatize people that don't need to be re-traumatized again. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Howard. Also, staff will be reaching out to you. Appreciate it. Our third speaker is Rebecca Miller.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Miller. And first, I would like to thank you, Dr. Logan, and also for the board for allowing me to provide public comments specific to the proposed implementation of the Reading Recovery Program as outlined in the Children's Initiative. I come here this evening to present my perspective on the implementation of reading recovery for students that are struggling to develop their reading skills. Currently, I'm the owner and managing director of Fixoxia, a clinic that specializes in working with struggling readers. I also volunteer at an elementary school here in OPS through my association with the Omaha West Rotary Club and its Rotary year program. I live in OPS District 9. First, I want to recognize the tremendous effort that I have seen put forth to develop a cohesive plan to address literacy in our district. I have been watching for more than a decade. And it has been a pleasure to see on some level that narrative really change. I think it is crucial. The messaging from the district and in the media and some of my private encounters or direct encounters with district staff indicate that the OPS seeks to align their literacy practices with the science of reading, which I wholeheartedly applaud. However, I stand tonight a little baffled and somewhat confused and concerned about the implementation of Reading Recovery as a program of choice for struggling readers. Reading Recovery, an LLI also recommended by the initiative, is based on the three queuing model, a model that has been consistently debunked by reading researchers around the US and the world. I offer a copy, which is, you will have, an open letter by US-based reading research authored in May of 2002 for your review and consideration. Here are a few of the topic, here are a few of the highlights. One, Reading Recovery is not successful in its targeted student population, the lowest performing groups. Reading Recovery is not cost-effective solution. Reading Recovery efficacy studies do not use standard assessment. Reading Recovery does not change by capitalizing on current research. Additionally, I reviewed the phonemic awareness in the phonics section located on the Reading Recovery website. That also is provided in your documentation. And I'm going to skip over some of that. But one of the things I found that on that website, they could not adequately describe phonemic awareness or phonics. The instructional, what they refer to as their instructional procedures, some of them literally made absolutely no sense whatsoever, to include, when reading continuous checks, children will learn to take apart words quote on the run and reassemble. A cut-up sentences require students to think about sounds and words. For phonemic awareness assessment, they list that children should be able to name letters. Naming of letters is not a phonemic awareness skill. It is, it is more closely tied to phonics skills. If Reading Recovery cannot simply explain phonemic awareness or phonics or provide evidence-based instructional practices on their website, how can we trust that they can train a cohort of teachers? Reading Recovery claims to give first grade, to get all students to first grade reading and is likely to get even second grade, to second grade level, too. How is this done? It's simple if you understand how the program works. The K-2 Reading Recovery program focuses on developing high-frequency words, words that cannot be decoded or sounded out. They just need to be memorized. High-frequency words appear frequently, right? In the text, up to 50% of the text are high-frequency words. Most children can memorize a moderate number of high-frequency words. And if they can memorize those, they can get up to grade-level fluency. However, the challenge becomes when they get to third grade, if those K-2 skills are not formalized and the ability to decode words, those kids will not become fluent readers and will have difficulty comprehending new words. I don't see any evidence in the Reading Recovery programs that demonstrate how they can get these kids proficient in reading and decoding words. Therefore, but I do see kids that when they're given those skills, they really can learn to read, write, and spell. So simply put, a vote for Reading Recovery is a vote against the base, against science-based reading instruction. And given all of the positive changes I see in OPS, and I see a ton of them, I, it's difficult for me to understand this message, that this is the message you want to get out and the direction that you want to go. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. February 20. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cassidy. Any abstentions? Roll call, please. Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Dottie.
Aye.
Nina. Motion carries. All right, moving on to our first item, the reason why everyone's here, the strategic plan. Dr. Logan. So thank you, Mr. Ray, for pulling that up and thank you for those who came out to speak about reading. I'm going to talk a little bit about it as I go through the presentation very quickly. It should take about four minutes, hopefully. Pointing, clicking this towards this, there we go. All right, it's all right. First, I go, okay, that's fine. There are four priorities in, first of all, I want to thank, first, the team is here in the first three or four roles that did a lot of the work on the strategic plan of action. Specifically, I'd like to thank Mr. Ray and Mr. Maskell, who really did a lot of the work in terms of making sure that it got to its final stage. Mrs. Colmine for her work with academics and it was a big, a big lift there and will continue to be a big lift. This is just the beginning. And to the entire team for all of their work on the strategic plan of action. This is, this plan actually started last April and it started with Mrs. Christopherson and her team working on the Portrait of a Graduate. It was very important for us to work with the higher ed community, our teachers, students, our business leaders to frame what we felt the graduate needs to know and be able to do here to be successful as they, once they transition out of K-12. We put together a lot of people to work on our values. The values team included the Board of Education, who completed their activity on August 26 during their board retreat. It included the, our Pulp team that went to Harvard last year and that had representatives from all of our negotiated units, plus HR, one of our board members and some staff that participated on that team. It included a kindergarten team, a fifth graders at Central Park, high schoolers through our high school advisory team led by Mrs. Utterback and her staff, teachers from OEA, members from our principals' union, and many, many other folks that gave input on their values and on the values. And so we went from our four priorities, academic, staff, financial accountability, and ethic of care, to our five values. Equity was the one value that every single group came up with. Now, I'm not going to tell you that kindergartners did not use the word equity because they're five years old, but they can tell you that if I'm able to have an opportunity to do something, then somebody else should have an opportunity to do something. And they actually are even much more articulate than I am. And so from the value of equity, which we defined, Mr. Thomas and his team helped to define equity, we provided some norms. And again, we had a wide swath of folks who went into creating those norms. And why do we need norms? Because equity is a word that can mean a lot of different things, but what does it mean in terms of our behavior? And if you can look up there, they have all of the things there that go into the behaviors that we want to see in a system that values equity. And then around results, we have lots of efforts, but those efforts need to lead to results. So we celebrate effort and we expect results. And if we don't see results, how do we go back to the table to make sure that we have those results? Leadership also was a, was one of the values that came up. What do we need our leaders to do? We need them to be consistent. We need them to demonstrate respect. We need them to be honest. We need diverse leadership, diverse in, in not just in what people look like, but how people think. And then also have a clear vision and expectations around where we are trying to go. We need accountability. It's not, everyone needs to be held accountable. We need to have objectives and realistic and attainable goals. We need clear communication. We need common metrics. There were many people who asked about goals and why we had the goals the way we did. We, Mr. Scott Schmidt-Bonnie and I, we tussled over goals. And one of the things that I have had the displeasure of doing is to relieve people of their responsibility of working in a school district because they have taken shortcuts to get to artificial goals that are unrealistic and don't really measure what we need to measure. We measure growth and we measure achievement. And we value both, but we know that the metric that the state wants us to have and all nationally norm test is achievement. So we have a balance of achievement and growth. And then lastly, and I think most importantly, we value joy. And that is, we have the best jobs. We do mission work. We are compensated well to do our mission work and we celebrate our accomplishments. We enthusiastically promote our schools and programs. Like all the smiles I saw this evening when the Burke students were up talking about being a pilot, and I didn't say this while they were here, but if I ever get on a plane and I see a 19-year-old, I don't know if I'm going to keep going, but I was really, really tickled. And we authentically live out our shared own mission and vision. Our mission and vision, I know that the board did that work a few years ago. It's rock solid and excellent. And it's, it is the mission and the vision that we need. And a very important word is in it, and it's "all." And what does "all" mean to you? All, respectfully to all of our board members, doesn't mean all the people in your self-district. It means all the people in the Omaha Public Schools. And I say that respectfully. And I'm serious about it because equity means that we will need to do some things different. So as you can see there, there's the list of all of the people that went into creating the values and norms. I left some of them off. Central Office, the District Citizens Advisory Team, I think are the two that I left off. In academics, we have several goals. There was one goal that was in the paper wrong. I think they corrected it. And we had it wrong in our original plan, I think we put out, and that's the third one down. You will notice that our goals are all leading indicators. We do not have lagging indicators because lagging are way after the kids have left us. And so when we think about our graduation rate, that third bullet down, by June of 2025, each school will increase the percentage of ninth through 12th grade students identified as on track for graduation by 5%. That is the metric that leads to an increased graduation rate. We get our graduation rate about nine to 10 months after our students have left us and it won't help us to know what our graduation rate is when kids are in the ninth grade. So we need students to be progressing along the way and putting in supports to make sure that students are successful as they transition to eighth to ninth grade. A lot of that work has already started with our ninth-grade freshman success framework and so on and so forth. In terms of reading, we really looked at that reading goal to make sure we had the right goal in terms of reading on grade level as measured by our district-level assessments and actually even our state assessments. That was the one that I think we might have tussled over the most. And we do celebrate growth. We know that growth is different from meeting the achievement level. We have many students who come to us and are in our schools that have some particular opportunities for us to help them be better readers and how do we get, how can we make, set a goal that is not just attainable, but that makes sense for schools so that they can consider growth plus achievement? In reading, that was one of the things that was brought up by two of our, two of my respected colleagues who spoke this evening. We look at a couple of things. One, when we're looking at selecting a instructional resource, we know that no instructional resource is going to have everything. So as we made the selection, we knew that we were still going to have to supplement the selection. So we will continue with our mastery guides, which include phonemic awareness and phonics. I spoke about phonemic awareness this morning. When I was in the kindergarten class last week, Mrs. Paloma-Harris's class, the students were doing activities around phonemic awareness in two languages and creating words. And so there is a combination of the two. I would agree with my esteemed colleagues that we need, you have to add some structure into the, some structured phonemic awareness and phonics into the programs, although every program that you buy, every adoption is already going to have a program, a part of the, the component is going to be phonics. But we always know that you need to supplement. Another way we had to supplement and will supplement is through multicultural texts. Multicultural texts are not a part of any, in any significant way, any of the reading series that we see. There are some that do better than others, but we also have to supplement in making sure that students can see themselves in the, in their reading. As a matter of fact, I was able to meet a student, she's 12. She wrote a book because she didn't see herself in any books and Scholastic ended up publishing it. And, right, so we know that that is something and so we will be supplementing in that, in that way. There are all kinds of things that we have to do. Nothing is one-size-fits-all. Some, some students can go right, for those of us who are old enough to remember Whole Language, could go right. They had students who had great context, read to at home, could go right to Whole Language. They didn't need any of that. And we know that students along a continuum need a lot of other things. Also, one of the things that we did look for in our adoption is to see programs that dealt with language-based difficulties with reading. Some people will refer to that as students who have dyslexia, depends on, I have a good friend who teaches at the Winwood School, which is a language-based school, a school for students with language-based challenges. And that's one of the things that we know that we need to do in terms of reading. So there is not one-size-fits-all. Some students can go straight from reading, from being non-readers to reading in two languages, as I saw the other day, and some will need more time and along a continuum of support. But I did want to address that and we will continue to have dialogue with our partners and share the information that you have requested. I actually requested it today, so I have it available for the board and I'll send it later this week. In terms of staff, we know that we are in, and it was, there was an article in the paper today that was just about substitutes, and we know that money isn't the only thing that attracts and retains folks in schools. And so our Grow Your Own programs, and if you look in the plan, you'll be able to see some of the strategies around having people embedded in our teacher colleges, in our teachers' colleges, colleges of education, rather, to make sure that we are recruiting early and connecting with our young people. We have many young people who are in our programs, in our own, in our schools, and how we expand those programs. And so looking at that as well. In terms of financial accountability, there are many, many goals there. You will be able to see all of them. Some of them include things that you might not necessarily think about financial accountability, but all of them lead to a financial accountability, such as making sure that our maintenance needs and that we're looking at that. Also, something we're really proud of is an improved plan for our environmental stewardship. We have some beacons around the district, such as Dundee Elementary School, which always is making sure they're composting and, but we need to make sure that we expand that. So we have a systemic approach to that. And then looking at an ethic of care, lastly, where we work to make sure that our young people are making good choices through social-emotional learning, not necessarily telling schools what program they have to use, because we value autonomy, but making sure that students and schools have social-emotional learning available to them in a structured way and expectations that fit into the, into the MTSSV, multi-tiered system of supports around behavior. And then also the ethic of care around our environment, as I talked about, that, that is also really super important to us. We have a big opportunity to improve that as well and decreasing the number of student disciplinary events. So reporting and monitoring, upon approval of our strategic plan, Mr. Scott Schmidt-Bonnie and his team will be building a dashboard to make sure that we can monitor the plan. We will have twice yearly reports to our Board of Education. And then teams have already started working on their tactical plans. Some of them are already finished. Some of them are in different places, but those will be due to the superintendent by the 19th. I think there's a date prior to that, to make sure that we look at what we're doing and then to update our tactical plans every 18 months. One of the things that we did not do in our plan was to have separate goals around equity. We believe equity is supposed to show up in everything that we do. And so you will notice when you start to see the dashboard that there is an expectation as we look at data that we'll be able to disaggregate it for groups. We'll be looking at our data for underserved groups and some of our strategies directly support making sure that students who are, who have been underserved or are underperforming are, their needs are met in a very significant way and in an intentional way. Those are, I think that that's it for the presentation this evening. I'll entertain if there are any questions at the table here today. Happy to take those questions.
Okay. I will open it up. Mrs. Gotti.
Thank you for the presentation. I know you've all put a lot of work into this and there were lots of documents to read. So I have, I have a number of questions. The first one is probably the one that I need to understand and maybe with a document that we could have. But we talk about the increases, so it's probably a three-part question. What is it, what's the base year that we're talking about, working off of? Two, what's the, what's the test? Is it MAP or is it STATE testing? And then can we get some kind of a document that shows us what the number is today and then where our goal number is so that the Board of Education has that as, and moves forward? Because it will be really a document that should be living for every board member going forward for the next five years of, here's where we were and then here's where we're going. So in those three, could you tell us?
Yes. 1920 is the base year and so we would go from 1920 moving forward. One of the things that's really important, especially if we think about the value of equity, is and how we look at our data. We cannot expect for the data to show that we have improved and are living out that value until we adopt that value. And it's a wonderful word. Everybody loves that word. And it's an important, it's an important value, but it's how we live it out that is even more important. So setting the expectation that students who have been underserved are going to, that their scores are going to increase annually is the first step. We have, the reason that we wanted to have an 18-month cycle is that if we need to adjust our goals based on our, based on what we are seeing after our base year, then we, the board has an opportunity to do that. This document is fluid. The goals can, can adjust, as far as we're concerned. It can adjust up, especially as we start to see how we are living, how we are adopting the values that, that we have here. We were hesitant to add, especially around the middle, there's a middle school goal that is around increasing the number of students who are in advanced courses. And so we went with wanting to increase the number first and then after our base year creating, co-creating with the Board of Education. creating, co-creating with the Board of Education, a goal around where we need to go with that. But right now, that is not a value that is pervasive in the district and we, our goal right now is to, first of all, socialize the value, share what the expectations are, and then to look at our data and adjust the goals as we, adjust the goals as we, after we have our baseline year.
So would it be possible, as this value is adopted, for you to provide to us, and I don't know if that's part of the dashboard, but to tell us, okay, here's where reading is and it's based off of, I don't know if it's going to be MAP or if it's state testing.
We're using all leading indicators. So in order to use leading indicators, we have to use our local assessments that are living now. So that would be our MAP, those would be our MAP assessments. The NSCAST is a lagging indicator. It comes several months later and the data isn't very valuable to us for daily instruction. It's instructive in terms of letting us know where our students stand in terms of college and career readiness, because that's the metric that it really is. It rolls up into the ACT. But we'll be using our local MAP assessment for, to, as our local assessment for reading and MAP.
Okay, that helps, that helps a lot. So would it be possi, when, when do you think it would be possible for you to give us? And I ask this because I think what happened in the previous strategic plan was we had this awesome spreadsheet and, but we just never could say, here's where we're at. And so we just kind of lived through five years of, here's where we started and we want to increase X, but we never kind of knew where we stood. So I'm just wondering, would it be possible by the summer to provide to us the data on what we're really driving forward for? Because if we don't have that as a roadmap, I don't think, I think it will be a challenge for the board to hold the district accountable on that part of it.
We agree. So that, that's actually one of the goals in the plan. It's June of 2020, June of 2020 that that is supposed to be ready for the board.
Okay, that's awesome. All right. I'm just curious today, what percentage of teacher positions are now filled by August 1st? We have a goal in here and I'm just completely curious to know, what is it today?
Well, Mr. Wakefield makes his way to the podium. I will tell you that all of these goals are measured by school. So that gives, that is for local school accountability for us, because one of the things we didn't want to do was mask data. So if we have a high fill rate, we want to be able to see what the fill rate is at every one of our schools, because we know we have some schools where we have some issues with staffing. And so in order to hold ourselves accountable, we talked about that, we had, we also tussled over, now, when I say that, it wasn't really a tussle, it's just a conversation. But we did talk about making sure that these goals are by school so that we couldn't mask where we are underperforming so that it will help the board understand where we're doing as a district better. That goes for local school data around academics and also for, for HR.
And district-wide, if we look at our over 4,000 teachers, we were 98.6% filled as a district. That number will look very differently as we begin to measure school by school.
Okay, okay. So really the 95% goal that we have is really school by school and not just a district goal?
That's correct.
Okay. And that would be, I think that would be really helpful in that document in June, if you could just lay that out as well. One of the questions I had on the reading part, and it might just be my misunderstanding of how this works. We talk about a 4%, each school will have a, have 4% more kindergarten through third graders who will read on grade level. We also have this goal of having the majority, vast majority of our students reading at grade level by third grade. But based on where we're, where our MAP scores are today, that wouldn't, I don't think that would get us there. Or am I missing, it's 4% in total over five years, not 4% a year, correct?
Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie will address that.
So looking at the increase of 4% over the course of the duration is what the question was. And that, a lot of what we did to kind of work our way into what a goal, a good goal would be, was to look at kind of the historical record, what have we been able to produce in the past, where are we looking to go in the future, and what would be an audacious goal in some ways, given some of these monumental efforts that we're undertaking now. And so we, we looked at what we've been able to perform and what we would then anticipate, you know, in these early years, as Dr. Logan alluded with the first 18 months, these plans rolling out and really starting to ferment and to get traction and then building there on.
So it was a historical, and that was one of my questions, was what's the historical trend been? Has the historical trend been? And I can't remember all the, I mean, we're, we're right under 50% today, correct, on MAP?
Correct.
At third grade, I think.
Correct.
And so this goal would get us to 50, if it was 50, it would get us to 54%.
It'd get us above that, correct. And, and that is a general normative comparison, so comparing us to all districts who engage in the MAP assessment. We also look a little deeper and get special norm group data, comparing schools and districts very much like ours. So trying to kind of look at both, you know, where we're at, where we want to go, to make our students competitive against students from every single district and every single state and every single Hamilton town of the country.
Right.
But also to ensure that we are building upon our success and that we are doing apples-to-apples comparisons and showing our schools, look, you, you are capable of performing at a high level. You are already performing at a high level relative to your peers. And it goes to that disaggregated look, that equity focus to ensure that it isn't just something that's occurring at a select pocket of schools, but that we're seeing it across the system.
So it'd be 4% at each school, essentially, right? So if you have a school that's today at 80%, we want to see them at 84%. If you have a school that's at 50%, we want to see them at 54%.
I think you'd want to look at both the district as well as each individual school. So what's our district performance against our goal look like? And then how does that look across the district? You know, what's the range we see?
Okay.
You may have some schools who are tripling what the district level goal is and you have others that, that may be struggling to meet that standard.
Okay. Okay, very good. Let's see, I have a question on what is, in here, we talk about the Academic Intervention Indicator Dashboard. What is that and can we, can we see that as a presentation as a board or is that something? Sorry, say it again? Okay. The, the Academic slash Intervention Indicator Dashboard, I think that's an enhancement of what was already built. Is that correct or is this a new?
It is a massive update.
Massive update.
We partnered with the IMS Department, gosh, 12 years ago and created an HTML version of a dashboard. It was one of the first dashboards in the district. And now with Tableau and other technologies and the voracious appetite for data from both our students and teachers, we're looking to create a dashboard that provides data down to the student level, at the classroom level, for teachers to use and other school staff for their various needs, as well as then rolling up to higher and higher levels of leadership so that everyone has available to them for management, for accountability, for everything they need, the information right available to them, as well as being able to see what's available to those below them, to allow for those active conversations, identify, you know, what, what can improve through coaching conversations and data dives to see where we can go.
So I do remember a presentation on the coaching and looking at the data, or the dashboard for that. And I do remember having a presentation on, I think it was absenteeism and suspensions, et cetera, and seeing the dashboard on that. I just think it would be good for the board to see what that looks like and to have a understanding of what the district is working with. And then I have a few other questions that don't relate to academics. One of them is, what year does the current facilities maintenance schedule go through? And who will complete and what is the cost estimate on the one in there? Is it 2025 that it currently goes through and we're looking at going through 2030? I think you can work out.
Dr. Sturbo.
I think you can work out like five years, is that right? Reasonably and know what it is?
Currently, yes, it started in 2018. We're using the 2018 bond, but we are putting together an RFP to do a new assessment of schools.
Okay. And the last one was done in, was it 16?
Uh, 16.
16. And it went through 2025?
It'll go through.
Or it did?
23.
Right. The previous one went through 2025, is that correct?
You know, I don't know.
That's what I'm, yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't.
No, that's okay.
I was thinking it was 2023.
Okay, maybe it was 2023, because I think you can work in five-year.
Yep.
So that makes sense. Okay.
Yep.
That's perfect. And then the June 25 date for having the bond projects finished, is that in advance of the statutory date? I can't remember what the statutory, well, it depends on when we go out for the next bond, right?
Well, right now, the 2018 bond should be finished in 2023, 2023.
2023. So, so the goal of having everything done by 2025, we better be done for the statutory reasons as well.
Correct. But even as, yes, we just want to do a full assessment again of, of even some of the schools that we hit in 2014 or 18, just to make sure everything, that there is that equity throughout the district.
Sure, absolutely. Okay. And then when will the student-to-device ratio be established? And I think that's probably an IT question.
I think we did, we did cover that the last board meeting, but Mr. Dunn?
Was that a four to one?
Yeah.
Is that, okay, four to one. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of. And then this is a financial question on the financial transparency piece. I would really like to see, and I know I've asked numerous times before, I would like to see the actual financials posted into Open Book in a comparison against budget so that it's easier to understand where those differences are at as far as what we budgeted and what we actually spent. I think it would be extremely helpful so that we can better understand as a board when it comes time to do the budgeting process. And you've got that Open Book actual data there. And I see Ms. Ryan nodding her head too, because I think it's really important. So those are some of the questions I have. I know that one of the, I guess one of the questions I have on the high school side from the docu, the Steel Dynamics document, just centers around, and I think it's wonderful, the career and technical education components that are in there. It's been a conversation that we've had at the district for a long time about improving those and getting more of that work done. The piece that I didn't see so much of, and I know you and I have talked about this before, is that liberal arts piece and wanting to make sure that's, you know, very embedded into what we're also doing. So I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that aspect of it as, even though it's not mentioned in here as much, I think because we're trying to, we're focusing.
Well, actually, it's not really a focus on career and technical education, that's just one piece of it. It actually also talks about the potential expansion of the International Baccalaureate Program to another school. It also talks about the potential for adding Cambridge, which is a Nebraska-approved advanced program, similar to advanced placement. It's kind of a hybrid in between an advanced placement and international baccalaureate, but really helps our English language learners leverage that second language or third language that they have as a part of their academic achievement. So it's, 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 that is also included in the recommendations as they go school by school to make recommendations. And so they've already started. They came, were here last week, but we had, two weeks ago when we had a snow day. They met with Bryan High School and with Northwest High School and what they, well, they've actually already met with all the schools. So that's, this is their second go-around where they're going deep or with, with each school to kind of understand even more from the school leader's perspective and from staff perspective, where there are opportunities. And then we'll be convening a high school committee from the, with community stakeholders to include stakeholders from our two new high schools to determine what programming should be offered and is, what is attractive, programs that should sunset because of interest or lack of alignment with H3 jobs, high skill, high wage, high demand in the state of Nebraska to make sure that we don't have any programs where students can't leave us, those who are interested in going straight from school to the workforce without a living wage. So those are some of the things that they're doing. But there is a balance in between the advanced programs, that some people would call them, more traditional advanced programs, and also to look at some high school scheduling as well, because we have some mobility in our district and how we can ensure that if students have to transfer from one school to another, that they are not losing academic credit. So those are some of the many things that they will work on. This team has done work in Grand Island schools. There's only one high school there, there will be nine here, but there will be, I think a significant, I know there will be a significant expansion in advanced programs for our students and to, to get a little bit more up to date on some of the programmatic offerings in, in advanced programs.
Great. And I appreciate the component of stakeholder engagement, not just at the two new high schools, but throughout the district, because I think that's so important. So I guess the one thing I would say is that this board will see a little bit of the implementation of the strategic plan. Clearly going forward, having been through this process before, I think it'll be absolutely critical that the board really follows the information that they're given in June of 2020 and then really listens to constituents, staff, kids, and makes sure that we're moving in the right direction and watches the data to make sure that we're actually seeing improvement where we need to see improvement, because we have plenty of room to work on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you. I just want to start by thanking everyone that's worked on this. I think often, at least when I think of a strategic plan, sometimes I feel like companies, businesses that write strategic plans, it's just something that they checkmark. It's, they have to write it, let's get it done, check, boom, it's never looked at again. But I know when I read our strategic plan that's in front of us, it makes me hopeful. It gives me hope. I think it's, we're going in the right direction and I feel like I'm really appreciative of the values, first of all, that were chosen. I love them. I really love joy. I think that one is excellent. I just wanted to point that out. I love that we, we put joy in there. We want our students to be joyful every day, every student, and we also want our staff to be joyful, whether that's a nutrition service worker, a teacher, a bus driver. We want everyone to be joyful. My question tonight, though, is a little bit more on the employee side, the staff side. I can appreciate the tactics that are in place for the pipeline to retain teachers. I feel like one of our biggest issues, we know, we all know we have a substitute issue. We never have enough substitutes. In fact, I recently actually looked at our site. I've never really looked at it before, but I scrolled through and looked at how many jobs daily are open for substitute teachers and it is, you can have your pick. If you are in the market to be a substitute teacher, you could do a half-day at one school, a half-day at another, a full day, I mean, you could literally substitute five days a week. And that's sad. It's, it's a sad problem, but it is across most of our country. I want to ask a little bit more about the retaining employees, because I think that a big issue that we have is keeping our current employees happy. I know that we have a lot of teachers that you will hear about that have left the profession, whether they're going to work in the private sector, which also is very disheartening. It's a tough job and I kind of want a little bit more information about the Grow Your Own programs and retaining our own staff and our own teachers.
Mr. Wakefield's going to come up.
And you're right, this is a, it's a huge problem and not just for us, for any school district. Substitute shortage really starts with teacher shortage. When you're short teachers and struggle filling positions, you're going to be even shorter subs, because you have less certified staff out there. Employee retention is a multifaceted problem, it's a complex problem. So it requires us looking at a variety of things. And in the strategic plan, you will see things along the lines of employee navigators, staff dedicated to helping employees address life problems outside of work. Think ride-share programs. My car is broke down, I can't get to work, so my option is to call in sick. Providing staff another option to get to work to do a variety of different things. Providing staff with resources they may need to solve problems at home. Not that we're solving the problems, but those resources and connecting them so that they're not missing work. Looking at retention, people leave bosses. So how can we help our bosses, our principals, our supervisors, our managers of our various departments, retain their employees and providing them tools and techniques and str... retain their employees, and providing them tools and techniques and strategies to address their employees to do that? So the strategic plan has all that kind of folded into it, as we work over the next five years to help with that.
And compensation, so, taking as much, as much, many things as we could, and looking at our budget to make sure that, to the degree possible, we have room, to make sure we continue to increase compensation, so we remain competitive with our peers. We know we still have work to do with that, where we have some initial starting salaries that are competitive. We lose ground later in the, in the tiers, as people progress, and so, that work, which I've talked with the board about before, for all of our employees, to make sure we remain competitive there. But as we saw with the substitute issue today, that's not necessarily all of it, it's how people feel when they get there, it's their sense of belonging, and/or commitment. You know, we have some substitutes who will tell you, I meet them all the time, Dr. Logan, I work here, I'll work here every day, this is the only school I want to work in, you know, and it doesn't really matter, it's not necessarily in one sector of the city, I see that, where people have really formed some really close and tight bonds. And then, just to go back over the substitute issue once more, is that we also looked at where we internally can do some things, so we can alleviate the problem ourselves. So how we look at, we pull teachers out, so, and there's, I, I have a lot of energy around that, because kids are missing instructional time. And so, how we can think about other times where teachers who could be available, might be available to receive a professional development when that's not kid time. So is that using more summers, where we can also increase compensation for our employees, because they get paid, because they're outside of their regular duty hours, so.
It's also not stated, thank you, by the way. It's also not really stated in here, but will we be continuing our, like, parent-to-teacher program? Will that be expanding at all?
We, we, I'm sorry.
You should just stay up there, Charles.
Yes, we'll continue parent-to-teacher, that's graciously funded by the community, through grants, and we will continue to grow that program and go on. We're also looking at, with recruiting, looking at advising programs, and how we can tap into those programs to grow our own teachers, well before they get into the College of Education, so we can begin to influence, and maybe draw some of our own back to us.
Mrs. Crackey.
I have a question about two things. I did want to note the subpay that was in the paper today, would you like to discuss that? And tell us what OPS is paying, only because some of our listeners out there may be intrigued by what you have to say.
We, we believe a substitute job is a very difficult job, and a very important job, so we are the highest-paying district in the metro area. We currently pay $175 per day for a day-to-day sub, that is $25 above the next highest school district in the metro area.
And is this the first year that we've gone to that?
Yes, the board approved that back in September, I believe.
So I wanted that to be known. And the other thing is, I'd like to go back to the discussion of the 4%, and the, the students who, we still have the 4%, but we want to keep going with that. And we didn't mention tonight our plans to remediate, or to help those students go to the level we would like them to go to, could we address that? So the public knows that we're the rest of the story?
Yes, we actually talked about reading recovery, and actually adding reading specialists into our schools over time. We cannot do it all in one fell swoop, but adding reading recovery at grade one for struggling readers. I know that as a school leader, school principal, I was a part of the Reading First Grant, which some of you may remember, where we, at my particular school, we actually had four reading recovery teachers, it was a very abundant time, back in early 2000. But adding that, and then adding the reading specialists for some of our struggling readers. One of the things that we also, as a part of our plan, is to improve our instruction, not just with our beginning teachers, but with all of our teachers for, in early literacy, so that teachers have a lot of, I call them, items in their tool belt, so that when students have difficulty, they know how to, they have tools to address those difficulties, when students come across those. And that is something that is a, I would say, a material weakness, coming out of, for some of our brand-new teachers, coming out of teacher colleges, it doesn't really matter where they're coming out. I saw that when I was in Pennsylvania, and when I was in Maryland as well, that the generalist nature of the programs don't, don't necessarily have teachers going as deep as they need to, especially when they're going into areas where kids present a lot of opportunities for them to really be extremely skilled. And so, that is something that is a part of our plan over time, to train and retrain our, some, some of our teachers who need additional support. And I know that they are excited about getting the support. One of the things that I don't want to come out of this conversation is a criticism of our teachers, because that is not where, but this is about, this is about all of us getting better at our craft, whether it's me as a superintendent in leading literacy instruction, it's a school leader at leading, leading literacy instruction, a paraprofessional who is supporting literacy instruction in the classroom, all of us can get better. And one of our values is results. And using us, all of us getting better, becoming more skilled, to my colleagues, my esteemed colleagues who are here, understanding the science of reading, which is really important, how the brain, pros, going back to Slaven and graduate schools, so please forgive me, but a shout-out to Johns Hopkins, because they have a great reading program, but, and understanding all of that that goes into becoming a really skilled reading instructor.
I, I did notice that you did catch the phrase of the paras and the paraprofessionals. And you know, that's my thing, about that extra help, just that extra little push and help that you're going to get to make your goal. And I won't go away from that, because I think that's so important, I see what it can do. I would like us to do something with more parent involvement. I would really like to see us involving the parents, and trying very desperately hard to get them into workshops and early-on instruction, and things we'll be doing, that they could assist at home. And that's my second thing, that I really am very passionate about, and I hope that we can get there. Hopefully, through this program, or some other grant, or whatever we need to do.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey.
Thank you. Mr. Prom.
Thank you. My first question is a math question for Mr. Schmidt, Bonnie. Has nothing to do with the mean or the median, though, so, I always ask you that question. It was asked earlier, but I didn't hear an answer. Is a 4% increase, there's probably a statistical term for it, but I don't know what it is. So say 50 out of 100 students are proficient at reading, and there's a 4% increase. Does that mean 52% are now proficient, or are we, is the goal 54%?
So the question being, is it a straight 4% increase, so you go from 50% to 54%, or 4% of 50%, which would be closer to 2%?
Correct, and so that relates to the question earlier. What, what is that 4% that we're looking for?
4%. In addition, so going from 50 to 54, not from 50 to 52.
Okay, excellent, thank you. It's probably the only question I have for you. Sorry, my notes are kind of a jumbled mess at this point. What is the Financial Accountability Task Force? Is that something that we have right now? It's, it's something to be created by 2025.
Probably the Grants Accountability Task Force?
Yeah, yeah, Grants Accountability, it's not, it's Grants Accountability, we currently have that already. What we are working to do is to make sure that the grants that we accept align with our strategic plan and goals. Right now, we accept grants for all kinds of things. We have students who can do some certain things, because we get certain grants, but they can't read. And so we want to make sure that we are adhering to what our core values are, around how we're going to prepare our young people, and make sure that we are protecting instruct, that's one of our norms, protecting instructional time, so we're not taking children out of the reading block to do other things, when they are not where they need to be during the reading. It doesn't mean we don't want to expose students to all kinds of fun things, but we want to keep the main thing the main thing.
And so that is something that's currently?
We currently have it, we're going to be refining our processes around the Grants Accountability Committee.
Okay.
It's been in place for, I believe, several years here.
Well, that, that leads to my next question. The goal is for, by 2025, to have those grants align with district priorities. Why can't that happen sooner?
Well, we have some grants that are already, that are already in progress, so, that we've already accepted. So, it doesn't mean that, some of them won't align sooner, but in terms of all of them aligning by them, 2025 is the measure, is the, is the time period that we feel we can do that. Some of them go out several years.
Okay, I need to take a look at something. My next question involves the, the goal of reducing discipline.
Disciplinary, disciplinary events.
Yeah, it's on page, I see it's on page 18.
Yeah, it's the, the goal around making sure that students are in class. So, rather than just looking at suspensions, we also need to look at referrals, where children are pulled out of class, because those actually, referrals, where that kids come out of class, actually impact our students more than suspensions. In other words, we have many more referrals than we actually have suspensions. But all of them can lead to time outside of instruction.
I think if I, if I saw that right, though, again, that's a goal, to have a process in place by 2025. Is that, is that accurate?
I don't, I don't know what goal you're reading for, I don't have the plan in front of me right at this moment, I'm so sorry.
I found it here, it is on page 18 of the 35-page document. By, by June of 2025, proactive efforts focused on improving social-emotional skills will decrease annually the number of student disciplinary events.
Lisa, do you want to come up and speak? I'm sorry, Ms. Utterback, I'm sorry, my apologies.
And so, I know that.
Ms. Utterback is going to speak.
Okay.
Yes, so, what we're, our goal is to really work on building the capacity of all of our teachers, starting with, in the beginning, all of new teachers, we're working with Human Resources to provide in-depth classroom management training at the beginning of each year, and then really working with all of our classrooms throughout the district, to really build the capacity of teachers, and have strategies in place for them to be able to connect with kids with relationships, to keep the students in the classroom and minimize disruptions. And we are creating a position in the district to assist us with that.
Okay, I guess my question's more of, would it be possible to do that before or five years from now?
Yes, that's a part of the process also, is to hire the position, provide training, get into classrooms, and coach on classroom management, and then work with administration through other types of trainings with our Dean of Students, our administrators, and looking at the triangulation of data with attendance, classroom management, and student behaviors, to minimize classroom disruptions. Because we know when students are out of the classroom eight, nine, 10, 15 times a day, they're not in the classroom learning, and so really providing strategies for teachers to use throughout the district.
And what's currently being used for that?
There's a multitude of things. We have some schools that are using Mark Brackett, he's actually coming in this month. A lot of schools are using Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three interventions. They're using their school social workers to align the supports, to provide to the student and family. We've built the capacity of our PAC facilitators, to really work with our students on de-escalation. We've done some restorative practice work with our, with our Deans, and looking at, when a student comes to you, we're actually doing a workshop with principals, that when a student comes to you with a referral, what makes the difference in suspending a student from one day to three days? Or why are you even suspending the student at all? And, because the Code of Conduct gives you the opportunity, it's a guideline, where a suspension may not have to be imposed at all. But really getting back to what happens in the classroom, or what does not, is what makes the difference. Because once the referral's written, all the work that could have been done to prevent that from happening, and so making sure that our teachers that are coming to us new, have in-depth comp training, which is around classroom management, also working with our school counselors, looking at a different model, where they're doing more direct service with our students, opposed to whole-classroom lessons, and then also embedding time in their day to work with small groups that may need some specific coaching or support around accepting redirection. And when our counselors at the elementary are going from classroom to classroom teaching lessons, they're missing out on ample time to really provide direct supports to young kids that need them. That's socially-emotional piece.
Okay, thanks.
So I was going to address the question about the goal. The goal is for all schools to get there, and so it doesn't mean that when we report out the data, we'll be able to report schools that have met the goal, the number, I said that we were going to do, we, it's about local accountability, not, and, and local and shared accountability. And so it doesn't mean that there won't be some schools that won't have it in 2021 and 2022, but the goal is for all schools to have it by 2025, and that's going to take time. We're not as, as far ahead as we wish we were, we have, there's a lot of work to do, and we can see that in our current results.
Any other questions from? Mr. Smith.
I don't have a question, but I do want to say thank you for doing the work, and I appreciate the language that's in here, that's talking about the action steps for each goal, or in 18 months. So that way, we can actually follow and track that. And then again, it states this, the steps can be revised to reflect progress in plan, so, I think that we're, we're on the right track, and it's good that we will be looking at it and keeping track of those numbers, in case we need to make some adjustments, so thank you for doing the work.
Thank you. I, I just have a couple quick questions, briefly discussed them a little bit with Dr. Logan, about any changes that happen throughout the strategic plan, to make sure that, that comes before the board, so we can vote on it. Just trying to make sure we fix some of the errors we did in the past, before your tenure, and then also with the dashboard. I know you research, you guys are amazing. I would, for me, just in my community, and a lot of the organizations that focus around kids, that dashboard has to be amazing enough that they can go in themselves and see where we're at, and how they can help our district with the strategic plan. And that actually leads to one of my questions here, is, do we know how many FTEs are going to be coming out of the strategic plan?
Most of them will be in the schools, so, reading specialist support there. In our turnaround schools, there is a lot of deep support, wraparound support for, and it's direct support to our young, young people. We have, it's, one of the, one of our areas of weakness is innovation, and so, we need to have an individual who focuses on innovation across our enterprise, that's all departments, and also continuous improvement, and our strategic, our strategic initiatives. So, that's probably the highlight, I would say. We also have two, two positions to support teacher pipeline, and I want to congratulate the Human Resources Department for their real out-of-the-box thinking about how we think about that position, as a opportunity for one of our less experienced teachers to work with our young people. We kind of laughed in the division, and saying that we didn't think it would be appropriate for one of the boomers, such as myself, to be going into the, into colleges, although I think that could be pretty hip and happening, but to look at how, using one of our really talented folks to go in and do that work, and then come back, and then go back into the classroom after. and then come back and then go back into the classroom after a couple of years doing, doing that work for, for us, working with our high school kids as they transition, staying really connected. We know our young people like connection. That is one of the things that they report out, that being connected and having mission work that really is meaningful to them, but they want to be connected. And so having an individual who stays connected with them as early as their late high school years, their freshman year in college, as soon as they enter the College of Education, and staying connected with them through they, through when they graduate is something that we know is really critical. So those, those are some of the most critical positions, I think, that will come out of the strategic plan. But we have worked very hard to make sure that our positions are as close to children as possible, just generally.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Just the discussion about the personnel as well as the dashboard, when we get that baseline data, I think it will be important, not just for the board, but for the community, to actually have a workshop instead of a regular meeting in June to really have us at the table and see that information as we, the strategic plan really starts growing legs and moving forward. Because as I believe Mrs. Gotti mentioned, you know, some of us on this board will not be here when majority of this work will be getting done. So it's not just for us, but it's for future board members that will be coming on to the OPS School Board. So very appreciative of that. So we're here at, about, for this plan to be voted on by the board. And I want to say on behalf of just myself, I'm sure I could probably speak for my colleagues, thank you, staff, for all the work that you've done, hours and countless of hours putting this work in. I know sometimes you, you don't get that pat on the back, but I mean, it really shows with this heavy document and really supporting our Superintendent, Dr. Logan, in this effort as we take a huge shift in the district and really focusing on putting resources in the classroom for every student, every day in OPS. And I just want to give you all a round of applause, so.
I thanked them all right prior, so.
And also thank you, Dr. Logan, for leading this. This is a big, heavy lift. And I know you said this is your first superintendent job and it's the only one you want, and this is, this is the work in action. So thank you so much for all you've done and, and leading this. This is an action item, so I will entertain a motion to approve item J1A.
Thelma?
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Dr. Holman. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Cracky?
Aye.
Proman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snite?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries.
We got more on the agenda. Up next is legislative update. We have Blair from Lindsay-O'Hara and Megan Neil Sprash, in-house counsel.
Now, this is going to be interesting. This is rocking and rolling. I hope it's, yes, we're somehow going to have to draw it directly. I don't want to mess up Mr. Ray's computer here. Okay, so we have a lot of bills to go over. You have your legislative matrix. It's time to go back to the matrix, hopefully in front of you. I'm going to start with an update on LB 974, which is the TOSA School Funding Bill, which is in the Revenue Committee. We are still awaiting an amendment from that committee, so the committee has not voted to the bill out to the floor yet because they're waiting for that amendment to be done before it's ready to go to the full floor for general file debate. Other bills that we've already taken up this year on the floor, I'd like to go to LB 206, which is on page six of your matrix. It's a carryover bill from last year. It's the Student Journalism Freedom of Speech Act. It was filibustered last week for three hours on select file or the second, second round of debate before being passed over on the agenda, before coming to a vote. So there was not a vote taken on second, the second round of debate on that bill. It will need amending, otherwise Senator Morfeld will have to prove to the Speaker that he has thirty-three votes to get it scheduled again for select file debate. But with that, because there were amendments this year, we wanted to change the position from oppose, which we had taken initially on the introduced copy last year, and change that to a monitor with research. So we'll go through all the bills and then, I think, take, take action as a, as a whole, unless you choose to split it up.
Yeah, so if you could just go through all the changes and then we'll discuss and go from there. Thanks.
Perfect. The next bill that I want to talk about that has already been debated is LB 880, which is the Change in TOSA Certification. That's a bill that's new this year, but we do see it in, in one form or another every year. It's a bill that would change the certification for the school fiscal year 2020, 21, the state aid to schools from March first, which is typically the, the date and statute. This is redoing last year's version, so it'd be changing the date to May first, 2020, so after the legislature has adjourned. We, the Legislative Committee recommends a position of oppose to LB 880. But it has been debated on first and general file and select file, and it will be on final reading, advanced to final reading. The next bill that is a carryover bill that we're going to see sometime this week, actually, on general file, is a carryover bill from last year, LB 515. It's the Student Discipline Act from Senator Vargas. It makes various changes to the mandatory reassignment and hearings of, of student discipline incidences. The bill is up on general file this week and could come up as early as late tomorrow, but more likely we'll see it on Wednesday because of other controversial bills up in, before it. It's the last bill up on general file for the agenda this week. There is an amendment from the committee that we don't think straight-on directs our concerns with the bill regarding qualified hearing officers and the timing after they've been confirmed to, to, to have the hearing and when the hearing is held, the timing of that is a little bit tight. So we are not changing our position. There was no change in, in the recommendation from oppose from last year. That did come up--
Nothing changed in the bill?
There's, the amendment that was, came out is from last year, so it still doesn't address our concerns directly. We're, we're still reviewing that, though, and if there are changes, we'll get that to the Legislative Committee straight away and put out an email to you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are old bills that we have, that I don't have a new position on for that one. So, okay, next. In terms of new bills that we have position recommendations on from the Legislative Committee. LB 839 is the American Sign Language Bill that declares American Sign Language as a separate language and a foreign language allows post-secondary schools to teach it, offer it ASL as an elective course for, we, the Legislative Committee offers a position of support for that bill. And that bill did have a hearing last week in conjunction with LB 965, which is a bill that establishes an English language proficiency assessment for students that are deaf or hard of hearing. That is, LB 965 is on page seventeen of your matrix, in case you're flipping through the pages there. So there was an amendment for that bill, LB 965, at the hearing last week that Senator McDonnell offered to put, to allow the State Department of Education a little bit more jurisdiction in developing that assessment and coordination with the Commission on the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. So we would recommend a position of support now on that bill. Next, we have LB 1089, that's on page twenty of your matrix, which creates a graduation requirement to submit for, for all students to submit the FAFSA application. This bill was heard today. We do have, recommend a position of monitor with research. It's, it would create a new graduation requirement, but Senator Vargas is working on an amendment. We had issues. It does allow families to opt out for extenuating circumstances so that the families would not have to fill out the, the FAFSA application. But we, he's going to tighten up some of that waiver opt-out language in an amendment, which we have not yet seen. But he did say that he would, he would be working with stakeholders and we, we hope to see that before it comes out of committee. LB 1210 is the next bill on page twenty-one of your matrix. This is a bill that would create the criminal offense of sexual exploitation of a student by a school official. This is actually a bill that we are working on in conjunction with Senator Vargas. We asked him as a former OPS Board Member to introduce this bill on our behalf. We're working with him on, on an amendment, but it's a bill that would create a criminal offense of sexual exploitation of a, of a student by a school official. We, as a district, of course, want to be proactive about protecting our students and helping policymakers put firmer protections into law. So Senator Vargas is working on an amendment with that, with that bill. And it would, it would, the sexual offense or sexual contact would be non-consensual regardless of age, if it's a, a teacher, a school official who is nineteen years of age or older with a student, a current student or a student that, one year out from graduation. So we wanted to make sure that, that there was no age requirement in there for, there to be consent. We offer a position of support on that, of course, because we're bringing that with Senator Vargas. There are a number of other bills this year that I would just want to briefly highlight that also deal with that similar issue of inappropriate relationships or contact between school officials or employees and students. Those bills are prospectively LB 766, LB 991, LB 1048, and LB 1080. And with all four of those bills, we offered a position of monitor with research. They haven't been scheduled for hearing, although I think they're going to be in a week or two from now. I think February twentieth for at least three of those bills, because they will be heard the same day as the bill that we're working on, LB 1210, in judiciary. So we did not take a specific position other than monitor with research with those because once they are scheduled for hearing, we'll review them again as a Legislative Committee and decide then if, if there should be a further position taken on it. The other bill I'd like to talk about tonight is another bill regarding school financing. It's LB 1073. It's on page nineteen of your matrix. It would create a school financing review commission and make some changes to TOSA. So it would create a sixteen-member, partially governor-appointed committee and is administered, which would be administered by the Department of Education to review school finance in depth. It would have some members of school districts, although we don't feel exactly comfortable with the amount of people that would be appointed to, from school districts and have school district perspectives. It would provide basic funding aid to all school districts at seven point five percent and, which would be included in TOSA as a resource. It would change the local effort rate to the maximum levy and reduce it by six cents so the LER would become ninety-nine cents. Beginning in school fiscal year 2020, 21, it would lower agricultural land valuations for school taxation purposes from seventy-five percent to fifty-five percent of actual valuation or seventy-two percent to fifty-two percent of assessed valuation. Which would allow some rural school districts to qualify for equalization aid. It would also change the date of TOSA certification to May first, 2020. So the Legislative Committee recommended that we take a position of opposition to this bill, in large part because of the basic funding or what we call foundation aid aspect, component of this bill. As an equalized school district, we do not support legislation that is disequalizing or which includes foundation aid. This is a modified version of what we referred to last year as the three-lever plan, which was not actually introduced in a bill. But I, and I defer to Mr. Roberts on any modeling questions of district impact in terms of finances. This bill does not include a new revenue stream or funding mechanism, and it, it does not include what, what the other bill tries to achieve, which is direct property tax relief. But this bill will be heard in the Education Committee next Tuesday. So that is why we recommend taking a position on the bill. So those are all of the, the bills that I was going to go more in-depth into. There are a number of other bills that we would be taking just a monitor with research position on. Those are LB 751, LB 759, LB 950, LB 998, LB 1064, LB 1131, LB 1186, and LB 1168.
And the OSR statement?
And the OSR statement. I'm going to turn that over here.
President Stowe, Members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Logan. The Board currently has a position statement on the Omaha Schools Retirement Association, or, excuse me, Retirement System. We discussed during the Legislative Committee of updating that statement, given the recent developments of the Better Together Coalition coming together and having several, six points of potential solutions. Those are, the discussion centered around asking you to adopt and affirm those six points from the Better Together Coalition. I will quickly go through those. The first is a district contribution of thirty-five million dollars. The second is a partial sum lump option, which allows a current member who retires the opportunity to take a cash lump sum payment upon retirement in exchange for lower monthly benefits. The third is a cost of living adjustment for current members, which begins two years after the date of retirement or at age sixty-two. The fourth option is a simple cost of living adjustment based on a percentage of the benefit amount locked in on a given date rather than one which compounds for the cost of living adjustment. The fifth is a reduction for future members of the, calculating the retirement benefit from two percent to one point eight five percent. And then finally, a cost of living adjustment for future members only if the plan is at least eighty percent funded. So the recommendation was the Board to go on record to support the work of the Better Together Coalition. And while we recognize there may not be legislation in this session, we appreciate the efforts of the Better Together Coalition.
So, right now, we'll open up for questions. If everyone has their matrix in front of them, do you have any questions about any of the recommendations from the Legislative Committee or statement? Mr. Proman?
I just have a, a quick comment related to LB 515. I'm just going to repeat what I said last year. Does more than just change provisions to discipline procedures under subsection three, for purposes of the subdivision, personal injury shall be considered caused by accident when the damage or consequences of the act that caused the injuries were unintentional. I think that puts other students, staff, and teachers at serious risk of injury with no consequence at all for someone who caused that injury. That is a, it's, it's just very different than a, than a typical standards for assault. And so I would just hate to see somebody assaulted and get broken bones or some other serious injury. And if those injuries weren't intended by someone doing the assault, then there's nothing a school can do to discipline a student. That doesn't make any sense. Like I said, that's, doesn't comport with standard assault law that's been around forever. And it puts people in the buildings at, at risk unnecessarily. I'm not sure why that's in the bill, but that's why I would oppose it.
Thank you. Mrs. Gotti?
Is that 515?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Proman?
Yes.
And that's the one that we talked about last year. It had the same language and we opposed it last year for that very reason. It had the same language, and we opposed it last year for that very reason. So, you know, we would appreciate updates on that as they come about, because I do think that's problematic for us, right?
Yes. And I would say there was that amendment. I don't know if you were reading from the amendment language or if you were reading from the introduced copy.
Introduced copy. For some reason, I don't know if the site's down right now or what.
I also am blocked from clicking on the amendment link to the, yeah.
I just found an old PDF of last year's bill, but I did read this year's bill, not the amendment. Some, I'm not sure.
The amendment replaces the bill, so it is a new bill.
Okay, well, then I did read the amendment, and that section's still in there. And just a final thought, it doesn't need major changes. I do think that the act itself should be intentional. I mean, accidents do happen, don't get me wrong, but to have to intend a consequence is a very different thing.
Mrs. Gaudy.
I just want to reference the Better Together Coalition comments that Mrs. Neelis Bresch brought up. I have long been a supporter of getting us to 30, 35 million. I've always said 30 million is the minimum of what we should be doing. So I'm very supportive on our side. What I want to make sure that the people who have reached out to me, who are retirees, current employees, that doesn't diminish the comments that you all have made to me, that those individuals have made to me, as I've, as this article came out in the newspaper and other things. I don't want to take away from that. And I don't, I don't, I can relate to the board component of it, the 35 million. I would love to see the vote by the different groups in support of this, but I also think that I'm not an expert to know the legal versus the legislative piece of that and what, where those boundaries are. And having served on OSERS for three years, I heard plenty of comments both ways. So I just, I think that component of it, I don't think I have enough expertise to understand whether it's legislative or whether it's legal action that gets us to this place. But I do definitely support the district putting more money in and getting us to a better funding, and certainly that 80% funding is going to be critical. I know the OSERS audit is on this board agenda, and while the market value dropped again, and we're at a lower market value than we were a year ago, I do think that last year's fourth quarter versus, I should say, 18th fourth quarter versus 19th fourth quarter should get us to a better place, and I know Mr. Roberts would say the same thing. So even though we flatlined for the fiscal year, I would hope that we get to a better place, but I do think there's work to be done. So I just want to say, for everybody who's reached out to me, your comments are not diminished by my voting for this. I don't have the expertise on the other pieces of it.
And I would be remiss in saying that the Board wishes to emphasize that our commitment is to the entire package as a whole. I forgot to mention that. I want to make sure that I mentioned that as well.
You did. You actually did. You did.
I did?
You did.
And I believe OEA has, their board has voted on this, correct?
I believe so. That's my understanding.
Do we know any other groups that have already voted?
I'm not aware.
Okay.
We just have a signed letter. The group signed a letter. Thank you for reiterating the package nature of the, when we entered into the workshops that are every month, have been every month since October, sometimes twice a month, October of 2018, we all agreed that we would come up with a shared solution to the issue. And in order to get to 80% in 2036, it would, and it would be 2037, depending on when we adopt or when the legislature approves, gets a package through, that it has to be all the components, because one, if you look at the component pieces, how quickly they, how much we save in terms of the overall unfunded liability, it's the package that puts us, gets us to almost 50% savings in, over that time. So that's really important, that if we're going to have a shared solution that we really share.
Mr. Perlman.
Thank you. I see one bill on the matrix that we don't have a position on, and that's 165, LB 165. Not to put you on the spot, but do we have any information of, it's a Too Young to Suspend Act? If there's, like, I don't know where that's at procedurally.
I don't think it will be getting out of committee. It's held in committee currently. It's a carryover from last year.
All right, okay. Thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions or anything? Blair, or Megan, could you kind of give us the rundown of just, of just the, what's going on in the legislature right now this week, or what's coming up over the next two weeks? Just so everyone on the board knows, I know it's, right now, it's getting heated, and I think there's this notion of we either support 974 or another package or whatever, but if you can kind of put that in layman's terms for everyone.
So we're in a holding pattern on LB 974, unfortunately, right now. We're waiting for that bill to come out of committee. I think they're having difficulties drafting the committee amendment and making it hit the right number, dollar amount. I think last time I spoke with you, we talked about how much the plan was costing in modeling, and it was over $600 million. That was too expensive for everyone. As I said last time, it does not have a new funding mechanism in it. So they're having difficulty coming together on what the amendment should be for that. And not just that, like, not just how it all puts, comes together, it's how you actually get that drafted into language, too, into an amendment form. So we're still waiting on that, and there's a lot of discussion amongst the lobby about that, but less so amongst senators directly. You know, they haven't had any, they don't have the bill in front of them or the amendment in front of them to read. So they're still very focused on what they're seeing day to day, which is general file, select file, hearings on new bills. So there is some of that discussion. There's a lot more of, I think, that discussion about LB 974, other solutions that would be, would impact school financing or create property tax relief, and LB 1073. That's why we did want to have you take a position on LB 1073 tonight, as there has been a lot of discussion about where districts would fall on that issue. I think it's important for equalized districts to fall on the side of opposing foundation aid, which is why we needed to have this discussion today. So that'll be coming up in a hearing form next week, and that is a bill that is in education committee, where TOSA and school funding bill has traditionally, in the past, But this week, we are doing, we have a constitutional amendment to increase senators to 55 senators tomorrow that will have probably a long debate, which is why we're not certain when LB 515 will be coming up. Could be late tomorrow, but more likely it's going to be Wednesday. And then we have a recess day this Friday, so we will be out on Thursday, or the day before we go into recess. The last day of the week, we typically try to do some catch-all work and go back to move things that are on select file or final reading. So I anticipate us doing probably final reading on Thursday, and then pick up again on carryover debates next week. The Speaker is really pushing senators to make their priority picks for bills, but there are still a lot of bills that are stuck in committee that are going to be priority bills, so we're still working our way through carryover, general file legislation for the most part.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, we have, this is an action item to approve the updated matrix. There's a lot of, do you have them listed, or do I have to go through each page?
I can go through.
Well, I have it in my document. I can scroll it. Go ahead.
LB 206, page 6, would be changing to monitor with research. LB 880, on page 16, would be oppose. LB 839, page 16, support. LB 965, page 17, support. LB 1089, which is on page 20, monitor with research. LB 1210, which is on page 21, support. LB 766, on page 16, is monitor with research. LB 991, which is on page 18, monitor with research. LB 1048, on page 19, monitor with research. LB 1080, on page 19, carryover to 20, monitor with research. LB 1073, on page 19, oppose. And then the other monitors with research, I don't have the page numbers, I just grouped them together. 751, 759, 950, 998, 1064, 1131, and 1186, excuse me, one more, 1168. Sorry, not in numerical order. And also the OSER's position statement to reflect the Better Together Coalition's work.
All right. Thank you. So, you good? Can we put the motion on the floor, then? Entertainer motion to approve the matrix.
Moved. It's a move.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ryan. Discussion. Mr. Perlman.
Well, I think it's important to, I mean, at least to some degree, discuss LB 206. I think it can be a controversial thing if we make it. You know, it's a student journalism, freedom of speech, but it's, and I guess really I'm just speaking for myself, it's, I think, more nuanced than what the title suggests. If anyone read the article on this two days ago in the World Herald, one might be surprised at the alliance of people and groups who are supporting this. You know, proposed by Senator Moorfeld, strongly supported by Americans for Prosperity. With it, as I understand it, the law would make student newspapers a public forum, and that's very different than what they've been in the past, which is a teaching tool for schools. And it's, you know, whether this board opposes it or monitors it as it moves forward, it's my understanding that there may be amendments to it moving forward, but I just don't want there to be an impression that there are folks on this board, or, like I said, I can only speak for myself, who don't want students to be able to express themselves. That's just not the intent of not being in support of the bill. But opening it up entirely does, opening up student newspapers may have some unintended consequences, and that's very important. And so I just wanted to make that comment, as someone who really appreciates freedom of speech and freedom of the press, but that doesn't mean a bad bill should go through. So that's all.
I agree with you, Mr. Perlman, on that statement as well. Ms. Crackey.
I remember going through this 1965, the Tinker Bell from Iowa. So that was all about the press and the students and their ability to speak or not speak. And as we have it now, I think we have a certain amount of restraint on some of the things that we will let them put in, even their student newspapers. So somebody clarify that for me? Who would like to clarify that?
What's?
In our student newspapers? What is our goal, and what do we expect, and what do we not expect? I think I know, but I just want to make sure we all know.
We currently follow the procedures. I mean, it's largely in measure, I think that was the Hazelwood versus Bethel Frazier case. You know, the, they are still students, they are still learning, so generally speaking, they have a level of freedom of speech that they enjoy. But if that is outweighed by the school's interest to protect their safety, then there is a level of discussion that happens within, with the student journalism teacher and with the student about whether or not that's an appropriate article to be put into that paper.
And because it came up again and we read about it, I was alert to the idea that we want to stay with the plan. Thank you.
Mrs. Gaudy.
I think in the past, we've been opposed. I feel like, was this just introduced last year, or was there one before that as well? I feel like this is not the second time. I feel like we've seen this come through maybe three times, and we've typically been opposed to it just from a administrative standpoint. I think the school board has a job to support the administrators in the building to do the right thing, and once it becomes free speech for everyone, we don't know what's going to end up in a school newspaper. And so I would agree with Mr. Perlman. I think free speech is very important, but we're also in a teaching environment, it's not a blog site, maybe, is the way to think about that.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Perlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gaudy.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're going to, because it's nine o'clock, we are going to move J2C, Here Comes the Bus Update, to the next board meeting, if everyone's okay with that on the board. I guess. Well, I'm just, no, they love.
They have to get on the bus.
They have to get on the bus, okay. So the next item on here is J2A, information item. This is the budget amendment that will be at our next board meeting.
Point of order. I just think we have had a very gracious group waiting very long to speak. Could we maybe move the budget to the second item so that?
Okay. Are you talking about phase? Okay.
The CBAC folks could leave if they want to.
Oh, the CBAC folks, okay. Makes sense.
Right. I think that's a nice thing.
I apologize. We can do that. Sorry, Mr. Roberts. Let's move, let's switch that around and do the Phase 1, Phase 2 Citizens CBAC update. Ms. America's not, she's familiar with long board meetings.
I used to be. I'm not sure what I'm talking about. I looked at the, I looked at the agenda, like, we're not even going until evening 3.
So just a question before we start. Some of our colleagues are wondering if we're going to have a 4:00 AM call in the morning?
There will be a 4:00 AM call. Set your alarm clocks now. Mine's already set 3:45, so I can have one snooze cycle.
This is what? I'm confused. Is it supposed to snow?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
All right. So Presidents Snow, Vice President Holman, Dr. Logan, thank you all. I'm going to be brief, but I just want to give an update on the Phase 1 and 2 bond programs. And also, what Lacey America is going to help with is just providing a CBAC update from a CBAC perspective as well. So I think the last time that the Board received an update was in October of 2019. And so one of the, I think the key messages today is the Phase 1 program is really nearing completion. So at the next time we provide an update, I think we'll be able to talk about some of the things that Phase 1 was able to capture and some of our success. But for right now, in the Phase 1 program, you can see there's 83 total projects that we had, and of those, 10 are either, either under construction or in closeout component of the project. So a lot of success with Phase 1, but overall, we're wrapping it up and things are, things are really moving along. On the, from a financial perspective, again, total commitments, 421 million. We've spent almost all of that, 99.41%. We've paid out another 98.4, 0.45%. We've got about 2.5 million left to complete in terms of construction, and you can see from the bottom slide there, with a bottom bullet, program contingency, we initially started out with just under 38 million, and we plan to use just about all of that. And so there's still discussions being had about, do certain schools have other needs, things that we haven't addressed. things that we haven't addressed and looked at. But globally, the Phase One program is nearing completion, which is our goal. On the economic inclusion standpoint, $46 million of the Phase One program has been spent and expended on small businesses, which is huge. And so, again, you can see the percentage there of the total amount, 11.9, but I think we're very proud of what we're able to do with allocations to small businesses in the Phase One program. On the, on the Phase Two side, one of the things that, when we came to you in October, we talked about some of the lessons learned from the Phase One program that we were working to apply to the Phase Two. Some of those really included as a district, we wanted to be sure that before we occupied our facilities, our buildings were ready to receive students. One of the things that we talked about, and Lacy may have mentioned this a little bit in the, in the CBAC, was the difference between substantial completion and final completion. Oftentimes, when school starts back in the summer, contractors kind of in what we call the closeout phase, where they may be doing some punchless items, so they may have a painter here, working around a student. And so, one of the things we really looked at as a district was, do we really, you want to have that as our condition when students re-enter the classroom? And so, part of the occupancy readiness transition team, it's made up of groups of our program management consultant Jacobs, OPS, school leaders, principals, to really just talk through certain aspects of the project to say, hey, before we enter the facility, you know, are we sure that all the fire, life, safety components are completed? Do we have areas that we don't want to enter until things are completed? And so, those things have really been something in Phase Two we're working towards, and I think the first session that I was a part of was for Nathan Hale Middle School. We worked with Mr. Williams and the construction team to really say, hey, before we enter the administrative space, is it ready to go? So, another component that we talked about in October was just increased field staff from the Jacobs perspective, more boots-on-the-ground type of folks that were under the quality control and quality assurance teams. And so, having some change in personnel with our program management consultant, that's also helped us to really take care of a lot of the things that we as a district felt were important, just from an occupancy readiness standpoint and some of the quality components. The monthly stand-to-deliver presentations, these are held once a month, and it's between the senior leaders of our program management team, Dr. Logan, and other folks from DLS. And so, really what that is, is a high-level perspective that we get an opportunity to really download to Dr. Logan from a high-level perspective on anything that's crucial to the Bond program. Are there any concerns? Are there any challenges that we haven't quite met? And I believe there's one tomorrow, possibly, tomorrow, Wednesday. So, and those have been really, really productive. And then, another thing that we also continue to monitor are just the current master schedule for the Bond program. You know, the program was adopted and the dates are set, but oftentimes, we want to just reevaluate and say, are the dates that we've assigned really going to, going to meet up with reality? And so, for instance, there's a case for Pinewood Elementary School where construction is moving along. However, again, as we look at it from a readiness standpoint, we really felt that we needed to extend Pinewood's move-in date another semester. And so, for Pinewood, it's currently at Mills, the Mills facility, they're going to move to their existing building, January of 2021. So, it's a winner move, however, we really felt that it was a great decision to just move it along from a readiness standpoint. And then on the Phase Two program, again, 25 total projects. We have 19 that are actively going on, six in design, five in bid award, six under construction, and we have two in closeout. The two in closeout are the Transition Program and King Elementary School. Great success stories, especially with the Transition Program, which I believe we're going to have a dedication ceremony in April, which I think if anyone has an opportunity, there's just a lot of good things that are happening with that facility. So, anyhow, that's just a quick snapshot on the projects for Phase Two. From a financial standpoint, again, we've committed in actual contracts about $104,000. We've paid out 42 million, sorry, 103 million, paid out 42 million, foreclosed it to complete to get to our 409, another 306 million to go. And on the contingency standpoint, we've got about $40 million, and we've used about 28 million of that. On the economic inclusion standpoint, for the Phase Two program, we've paid out about 7.5 million, or we've got about 7.5 million committed to small business at the early stage. Of our current contracts that we've committed, 103 million. So, right now, we're sitting at about 7.25% of our contracts that have been committed to small businesses in the Phase Two program. And I want to show, Matt, do you need to? Okay. All right. Okay, so what do we do now? I'll have Lacy America come up and just have, share a few words from a CBAC's perspective. And again, the goals of the CBAC Committee are really to be that oversight agent to our team, to the Jacobs team, to ensure that the things that we promised are being upheld.
Did you want to introduce yourself here?
So, by the way, I'm Jeremy Cobb. So, I was formerly a part of the Jacobs team. I joined the district in August of 2019. And so, I'm Director of School Operations, and that means a lot of things, but one of the things that I've really enjoyed is being able to work with the teams of folks that are made up of the service center of the schools, so it's been, it's been a really exciting opportunity for me.
Hi, my name is Lacy America. I'm a former OPS Board member and lifelong resident of South Omaha, and I joined the CBAC Committee, I think it was the fourth quarter of 2018, to help, help increase the amount of representation we had from our South Omaha and Bellevue communities. The screen you have right now, I really wish you guys could see the drone footage, but it sounds like we're going to put that on the Bond website. I'm getting nods, so yes. It's really neat to see the time-lapse footage, to see, you know, things going in the ground at the 156th and Ida site, to be able to see the steel actually coming out of the ground. And for me, it was really neat for the 60th and L site. Because it's up on a hill, if you drive by, you don't think anything's happening. And I've had neighbors from that neighborhood say, what's going on? Why is there construction happening out west and it's not happening here? And this is proof, there is, there are things going on up on top of that hill, you just can't see them because they're underground or at ground level. So, we're looking forward to when our steel starts going up so we can see that school on top of the hill. I have really enjoyed my time serving on the CBAC Committee. It is extremely transparent. We grill them with questions and we ask hard questions. I know a couple meetings ago, we talked about issues that some schools had had when they were moving into their buildings, when those punchless projects hadn't been done and they weren't at a final completion state. It's hard to teach when you have somebody hammering drywall next to your classroom or they're still trying to finish things up on the roof, and your kids can hear and they're distracted. So, I think hearing now that we're moving towards, no, we need our schools to be in a final completion state before we move our kids and teachers back into those environments, that's brilliant. That's what we should have probably been doing all along, but it's glad we recognize that now we're making that change going forward. We've also spent a lot of time the past few months talking about the Economic Inclusion Plan and really just being honest with ourselves that Phase Two is really going to be a challenge to reach the 15% goal, and just making sure that we're, we're aware of that and we are able to communicate to people that that's a stretch goal. We recognize it's going to be hard because we had all these small businesses that participated in Phase One, and that was great, but they got bigger and they grew their budgets because they were doing these projects and able to take on more work, and they're not small businesses anymore. They don't qualify to be considered a small and emerging business, or they've been considered a small and emerging business by the city for a certain amount of time, and they're not eligible anymore. And so, unless new businesses come along, it's going to be really hard for us to make that 15% goal, but we should keep pushing towards it and keep making good faith efforts and doing everything we can to reach it. Another item that came up at our next meeting is just kind of the discussion of where, where does CBAC go from here as we're finishing Phase One and we're really getting into the heart of Phase Two?